Good evening, welcome to the Elk Grove Unified School District Board of Education meeting. We did meet in closed session and we took action to appoint Mr. Mark Sarudi as our interim superintendent when Dr. Ladd retires on September 12th. We would like to also announce that tonight's meeting is being video and recorded and will be available on district's YouTube channel. There are blue cards available just outside the boardroom. If you wish to speak to an item on the agenda or off the agenda, please indicate whether you're going to speak to an item on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we will assume you wish to speak when that time comes. We start our meetings by recognizing some special people to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and tonight I'm going to have our clerk, Mr. Steve Lee, introduce our special person this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. May I ask Catherine Brink and her family to approach the podium, please? Tonight, we are pleased to recognize Catherine Brink for her outstanding support of Toby Johnson Middle School. Catherine Brink is a local leader who grew up in Sacramento and has lived in Elk Grove for the last 18 years with her husband, Brian. She is a graduate of Sac State who not only achieved her bachelor's degree, but she went on to earn a master's degree in curriculum and instruction and her administrative credential. Catherine has been a faithful member of the Toby Johnson Middle School family for three years and has three more years to go. Her eldest son Spencer is presently a 10th grader, a student at Franklin High School, where her second son Zachary is an 8th grader at Toby. Her daughter Caitlin will join Toby Johnson next year. Catherine began her service to Toby Johnson as an involved parent, helping with the Spring Fair, chaperoning at dances, and being the kind of parent who supports both the student and the school. She is presently serving on Toby School Site Council for her second year, although we hope to keep her even longer. But Catherine's service to the Elk Grove Unified School District goes beyond Toby Johnson. She is a 3rd grade teacher at Irene B. West Elementary School as well. She has planned the Harvest Festival, serves on their PTA. Her husband, Brian, is a special education teacher at James Rutter Middle School as well. Toby Johnson Middle School is proud to have such a wonderful mother, wife, educator to represent our schools. The Board of Education is pleased to recognize Catherine Brink, many contribution to Toby Johnson Middle School and the Elk Grove Unified School District. So don't go away, I'm going to invite the principal, Jerry Crosby, are you here? You're hiding in the back? Come on up.
Shall we do the pledge first?
Let's do the pledge first and I have something to present to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of course, as always, we have this beautiful flag.
Thank you so much.
What's that?
Thank you.
Sure. Let's turn around, let's do some photos with everyone else.
If you didn't hear, she received an Elk Grove keychain as well as a write-up of the words that described her and that was donated by our partner in education, Roy Herberger Elk Grove Citizen. Thank you so much, thanks for all you dedicate to our school district and students. Next on our agendas, our first time for this school year to have high school student representatives give their reports. We're delighted to see you here tonight. We have students from Kasumnas Oaks and Pleasant Grove. I'd like to call up the Kasumnas Oaks representatives.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Ladd, and Ms. Heine. It is our pleasure to be here tonight reporting to you as Kasumnas Oaks High Schools Board Representatives. My name is Bailey Coben.
And my name is Brooke McNeil.
And it's an honor to be here. Our chapter of Link Crew has been very busy making sure that the freshmen have a great start to their school year. Return to the Den Day was on August 13th and many students were able to attend and buy new spirit wear. Our Link leaders are juniors and seniors who have applied and are now in a crew with about 8 to 10 freshmen. Link leaders will be going into advocacy classes throughout the year to meet with their freshmen and ask them how their year is going. They had their first meeting August 26th and it was a great success. Link Crew hosted a freshman tailgate last Thursday and a barn buster event will be taking place in September. Back to School Night was on Tuesday, August 19th this year. Many parents were able to come out and meet their students' teachers and talk about what they will be learning this year. Parents and students also had the chance to buy spirit wear for our upcoming football games and sporting events. On Friday, August 22nd, we had our annual Welcome Back Rally and Kick Back with the Pack. Students attended the rally, decked out in their class colors and ready to show some spirit. There are many games such as Class Chance and Jousting with Pool Noodles. We also had a guest performance from our Varsity Cheer Team. It was a huge hit. That night, students came back to school for the Kick Back with the Pack where they could enjoy Baja Burrito, Jump Houses, and a Dunk Tank where they were able to dunk their favorite teachers. It was a great way to catch up with friends after an awesome first week of school. Wednesday, August 27th, held this year's Club Rush, an event that's purpose is to let students know about all of the great clubs CO has to offer. At lunch, the clubs had tables set up with information about how to get involved in their club. It was a great turnout and many of our students were able to sign up for new clubs.
After school, students participate in a variety of fall sports. Our fall sports include football, women's volleyball, cheerleading, men's soccer, cross-country, women's tennis, and women's golf. Students are beginning to get excited for the fast approaching homecoming week. The homecoming festivities include float building, our annual Powderpuff Game, Homecoming Royalty, Spirit Days, and of course, the Homecoming Football Game and Dance. The theme of this year's festivities will be Classic Disney and that theme will be portrayed through the class's floats, rally, and the dance itself. Both of our schools' academies, ADE and Culinary, have hired new teachers this year and they are still filled to capacity. Many students enjoy taking classes involving things that they could see themselves doing in a career. Our Wolfpack TV program had a great start this year and they have been taking care of the school's announcements since the first day of school. Students love the program and how it is like you're watching your friends on it. On September 30th, the Kasumnas Oaks ASB will be hosting an all Sacramento ASB program where we hope to integrate a networking program where we will be able to share ideas about events as a community. ASB programs will be coming to CO as far as Lodi, Colfax, and Nevada City. We have some exciting events in October including our senior trip to Fright Fest at Six Flags Discovery Kingdom on October 11th, as well as Unity Day, a day full of bonding which will be on the 24th. Finally, we would like to thank Superintendent Ladd for all of his service to our district. He will truly be missed and we wish him luck in the next chapter of his life. Thank you so much for your time and we look forward to reporting to you as Kasumnas Oaks Board Representatives on November 18th.
Excellent job and we wish you the best this year. And next, we have Pleasant Grove High School representatives.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Ladd, and Ms. Heine. My name is Melanie Ayala.
And my name is Robert Gonzalez from Pleasant Grove High School. We are honored to be here tonight.
Pleasant Grove's 2014-2015 school year has been off to a hectic but productive start. This year, our ASB program has continued to thrive as we continue to grow into a bigger family. For the first time this year, we added on more freshmen into the ASB class and they've proven to be almost as hardworking as our veterans. We proudly recognize our school's early academic and athletic achievements along with upcoming events. Link Crew has started off the year putting in hours before school to prepare the numerous incoming freshmen for their high school experience. Our seniors started their first day of school with Senior Sunrise where we had the opportunity to catch up with friends, win raffle prizes such as yearbooks and dance tickets, as well as Disneyland tickets, and watch the sun come up as we started our final year together.
We got our staff excited for the start of the year with our annual staff rally where staff was able to team build as well as receive verbal validations from students. Because this year's homecoming is later in the year, we introduced a new tradition, the Welcome Back Rally, which was themed Staff vs. Students. During our rally, students and staff competed against each other in games like "Don't Forget the Lyrics" and competitive relay races. One of the highlights of the rally was the unity felt when all of the classes were cheering each other on during the games and Spirit Stick. Above all, seeing our principal, Mr. Meyer, and our Athletic Director, Mr. Beldon, participating in the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge. Thank you to both our principal and Athletic Director for being such great sports and supporting the awareness of the ALS disease.
Within the first weeks of school, Senior Parent Information Night and Back to School Night also occurred. This allowed our parents to gain information about the upcoming year and learn about what happens on campus. In addition, last week, we hosted our traditional Renaissance BBQ to reward students for their academic successes. This coming Thursday, seniors are participating in the event of Senior BBQ where we will be able to break down barriers and stereotypes and get to know one another on a deeper level. Hosted by motivational speaker Keith Hawkins, the day will set a positive start to our final year together.
This year, our football program is anticipating the new season but have faced some challenges along the way. Our new head coach, Coach Rosso, is currently recovering from surgery. Fortunately, Coach Gardner, a previous Athletic Director, has volunteered to coach our football team until the hopeful return of Rosso. Our football teams have become more involved during rallies with our cheering section, the flock, and have even started a new pre-game tradition. Our athletes have gone off to a great start this far. On Friday, we had our first football game. To get the season started on a good note, we had our annual pep rally on the hill which included games, a barbecue, and painting to get our students spirited. The flock came out in full force cheering on our boys with chants and introducing the hopeful tradition of Flower Power where we chant over and over again, "I believe that we will win," while throwing flower into the air. Along with football, volleyball season starts today as we compete against Kasumnas Oaks. The rest of our sports, including women's tennis, men's soccer, women's golf, and cross-country have also put up great battles in their early games of the season and hope to continue to learn and improve this fall.
An upcoming event is Unity Day, which is to occur October 24th. Unity Day has consistently been an inspiring day where students are able to open up and realize the similarities they possess with one another. This day consists of small and big group activities along with individual reflection. With the late start of homecoming this year, we've had more time to prepare to make a memorable event for the whole school but especially the seniors. This year, we have decided for our theme to be cartoons. Each class was assigned a cartoon show and made a mural that embodied the show that they had chosen. This year, the seniors are SpongeBob, juniors are Scooby Doo, sophomores Flintstones, and freshmen are Rugrats. Each class is starting to design floats for our annual homecoming parade. The preparations for the Homecoming Rally have started, which will be led by sophomore or president Max Creach. The Homecoming Rally will include performances by PG Cheer, our very own Soul Purpose, skits performed by Pleasant Grove Theater Productions, and the exciting reveal of Homecoming Royalty. Seniors cannot wait to nominate their peers for royalty next Thursday.
The start of the year has been outstanding and we hope to carry on the enthusiasm into another incredible year at Pleasant Grove. President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Ladd, and Ms. Heine, thank you for your time and we look forward to seeing you next time.
Thank you, excellent reports and you can tell lots going on in our high schools. Great things are happening. At this point in the agenda, we'd just like to recognize that the board takes great pride in contributions of individuals throughout our educational community. In almost every regular board meeting, we start our meetings by recognizing these individuals and groups who performed above and beyond. And tonight, you can see who's surrounding us, we've got some students from our outstanding agricultural programs from our... Mr. Fortino, we're going to wait a minute on this. I'll be right there. But I would like to recognize someone before we get to our students because there are some guests here who would like to give honor to someone very special in our district who is presiding at his last regular school board meeting. And we would like to take a few moments to honor our retiring Superintendent Dr. Ladd and they did fill out blue cards, so you can frame these. I would like to start by asking our Assembly Member, Joan Buchanan, to come forward. And Dr. Ladd, would you join her? And we have several of these, so we will take a group photo so you'll get to stay with us, Mr. Buchanan.
Wonderful. It's a real honor to be here, Steve. A real honor, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. I don't know if you remember the last time I was in this room, but you had invited me to participate in a workshop when you were starting to think about how you're going to integrate STEM education into your curriculum. And I was so incredibly impressed that you were not only here the whole three hours, but you helped lead the workshop. And to me, that spoke volumes because here you have the Superintendent of the 3rd largest school district in the state of California who understands what it means to lead by example, to be that instructional leader, and to help a district successfully integrate technology and develop new curriculum. Another instance that I'll always remember was a year ago when we were fighting the Local Control Funding Formula battle and you called me and you wanted to talk and you said, "I'm not leaving my students behind anymore." And you came and you met with me and you talked at our hearings and you really talked about the fact, for all of those who don't remember, your school board probably knows, but we give 50% more funding to districts where you have a high percentage of disadvantaged students, but we don't do the same thing for schools where you have a high percentage. And so what happens is, a student in a school that has 70% disadvantaged students but the district doesn't gets less money than the district. And you were just adamant that you were going to change that. And we may not have been fully successful in getting the formula designed the way we wanted to, but the advocacy on the part of you and others made a difference in our getting a formula that was much more equitable for all students in the state of California. So those are two recent experiences, but let me just say this, because not all of you know, but I know most of you know, I actually served on school board for 18 years before I ran for state assembly. I've had conversations with John Dacey, the Superintendent of the largest school district in the state. I've met with superintendents with one school, school districts, and you are in a class by yourself. I can't begin to tell you how much I admire and respect you and appreciate how much you've given, not just to the students here in Elk Grove, but how much you've given to public education in the state of California. So you're going to be missed, I'm sure you're not going to disappear because I know people like you, when it's in your heart and it's your passion and it's something you feel strongly about, you're going to be an advocate for many years and share your knowledge and your talents with everybody. But it was important for me to be here tonight when they called and asked me if I would take the lead on the resolution. I was extremely honored when they said, "Well, you're out of session, do you want to drive all the way to Elk Grove?" I said, "Absolutely," because I can't think of anyone I admire and respect more.
Thank you.
So I hope you have a wonderful retirement and I hope I still see you around, you know, fighting the good battles.
Very good.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And while I was honored to take the lead, this resolution also is signed by Senator Steinberg, President Pro Tem of the Senate, and Assembly Members Pan and Cooley.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm honored too. It's been a pleasure. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Assembly Member Buchanan, and it's nice to be surrounded by students that are part of those programs that Dr. Ladd and the board have supported and stamened for our opportunities for students. At this time, I'd like to call Donna Tole forward, our Supervisor for Sacramento County.
He thought he was getting away with that, a big to-do.
Well, President Cox, members of the Board of Education, I'm delighted to be here to join with you, certainly in your regular business meeting, but on a very special evening, which obviously you've heard from a number of your students in the district and you're going to have a chance to recognize others in a moment, but it really is important, as Assembly Member Buchanan said, to take just a moment, to pause, to recognize a gentleman who, again, this board had the foresight and certainly the vision to hire some nine years ago and to see the accomplishments that he's been able to bring about, certainly through his leadership with the support of you as a board, support of a broader community of the 5,000 employees in this district and the 60,000-plus students and all the parents and other community supporters who, again, I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with this man, to see him excel, certainly in his ability to lead and to guide. And I have a resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it was passed unanimously, so you're in good stead there. And I'm sure all the other recognition comes with a lot of other accolades, but I do want to note that the opportunity I first had, I think, to work with Steve was, you hadn't been here very long and you were trying to cite the now completed and well-constructed and well-attended Kasumnas Elementary School. And I remember, as Member Buchanan said, certainly Steve's very collaborative, his roll-up-the-sleeves approach to getting people around a table, in this case, it was a very big table, and to try to find a solution to citing that school. And certainly, I'm sure he kept all of you on the board informed of that, but there were some very tense moments. But nonetheless, Steve articulated, I think, the vision of this district to have a facility that served the needs of the community, of the students who attended that particular case, and worked through that. And again, with a broad level of support, certainly cited that school, it's now built and completed and not unlike all the other schools in the district that, again, have a story to tell as well. But Steve, that was my first experience of really working with you on a very close basis and over the years, I've had a chance to share the dience with you and recognize others in this community and it's a real pleasure to be here this evening to recognize you for all your contributions. And I want to note one thing out of the resolution, and go through all the beginnings, humble beginnings in Florida and how he moved his way westwardly to this very spot, but the thing that I think captures the most important part of your service in public education is that you've earned the respect and admiration of countless people, of hundreds and hundreds and thousands of people throughout your work, people of all ages, from all walks of life. And it's for a number of reasons and this cites a few of them, your compassionate leadership, your intellectual abilities, your witty and charming and sometimes kind of hard-to-follow sense of humor, but nonetheless, a very good sense of humor. But most of all, for your integrity, your strong work ethic, and your dedication, your ongoing commitment to help others achieve their dreams and goals. And that says it all. So congratulations, I wish you a great retirement, Steve, and I know as Joan said, you're not going to just disappear into the vapor. You're going to be leading the education somewhere in your life and retirement, but I wish you and Debbie all the best in retirement and thank you so much for your leadership and good work. Godspeed. Congratulations.
Thank you, Supervisor Natola, you really, you and Assemblywoman Buchanan really captured our Superintendent well with your comments. Next, we have Rich Lozano from our Community Services District Board.
President Cox, members of the board. Ms. Heine, thank you for having me tonight here. You know, I come to you as the President of the Kasumnas Community Service District and we want to honor Dr. Ladd for his ongoing service and ongoing commitment to our community, not only in the education realm as it sits in a classroom with teachers and those sorts of things, but I also wanted to point out his commitment to the Parks and Recreation Department of our Community Service District, the ongoing partnership of collaboration and special use facilities and things like that that you've done over the years and we really appreciate that. One other item I want to point out real briefly is his commitment also to public safety. And the public safety part of about four years ago, the three agencies here locally came together and did a project called Safety Town and it's still going on today. And Dr. Ladd jumped in with two feet and was willing to bring that on and have the school district partner with our fire department and Elk Grove City Police Department to make that pre-K program happen. And so we really appreciate it. I won't read everything on here, but we want to congratulate you, Dr. Ladd, on your retirement and it's been an honor to serve for you, also with you as a board member. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And next, we have Jim Klein from Chamber of Commerce.
President Cox, board members, I'm here as President of the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce to recognize Dr. Ladd's involvement in the chamber and the community. And if we learned anything from Dr. Ladd, we learned that you can't have a successful education district without a successful business sector and it's very important to connect those two and Dr. Ladd has worked tirelessly to do so. He's well-respected within the Chamber of Commerce and the business community. A personal friend of mine, I've worked with him both on the board, at the Chamber of Commerce, and as a member of the business community. And I'm very honored to be able to present this award to you this evening and represent our business community and thank you for your years of service.
Thank you very much. Thanks to you for being here. We are going to take a group picture soon, so the last person here this evening is Pollyanna Cooper Levangi, a former school board member from our district with her family.
So I can't speak as eloquently as our public speakers because it's been quite, well, almost two years, so I have not had a lot of practice getting up and speaking in public since my resignation. So I'm going to read it, but you know it comes from my heart. Times flown by, I can remember the time that so many scenes from our past that we shared together, that we shared as our original board. But in 2004, Jeanette, Priscilla, and I went down to San Luis Obispo for your final interview, got to meet with Debbie, made sure everything was kosher, and sure enough, you know, you had the admiration of your staff, of your colleagues there. Your board there was so sad to have you leave them and we could feel that when we were down there. And so we knew we were making the right choice when we went down there. I remember asking you, "Are you in it for the long haul?" Because I want you to be here, my kids are going through school and I want you to be here for the long haul. And you said you would be and you have been. And so you're a man of your word and I really admire you for that.
I'm going to start crying.
You came to Elk Grove during some really, really exciting times. We had money, we were growing, we were building schools at this amazing rate, and we had such a positive outlook on how we could educate our kids to the very best of our abilities. But, not unexpectedly, as everyone in the education field knows, we go through these cycles and challenges were on their way. The economy started to spiral down and with that, our rate of growth slowed, our financial state changed, obviously, and we were entering some tough times. But you didn't ever waver. You pulled us through. I can remember having meetings with you and I'd be a little stressed out about what was going on and you were just so tenacious about holding on to what's positive. going on, and you were just so tenacious about holding on to what's positive, on the holding on to the things that we could do to make our district shine, even though we had like these heavy clouds hanging over us. So I'm so thankful for that. The Culinary Arts Program, the students spoke about it today, the IB Program, the Virtual Academy, maintaining class size reduction with all this, and our work, your collaborative work with the colleges, I think, you know, Forward Pass, I mean, I can just name a million different things. But those are, to me, some of the, just a few of those student-focused successes that you're going to leave this district with, and we're so thankful. You built a really strong team. I got to say hi to most of them tonight, and it was really exciting because they're really great people. You had faith in our teachers and trusted them to teach our students. You had faith in your leadership staff, the principals, and you really connected with the students and the community. And I think you can see that with the people who came up to speak before me. On behalf of several members of the board who hired you 10 years ago, I'd like to present you with a little gift. And as, you know, Priscilla always is ingenious in what she thinks of getting, so to honor your healthy attitude and your support of the arts, your vision was always crystal-clear, and you worked so hard to focus on the right ingredients to create excellence by design. As a token of our appreciation of your service, we'd like to present you with, and it's coming, actually, but this is, it's an artistic-shaped bowl and a crystal bowl, and it has his vision of excellence by design. But in the meantime, you're going to get a little goody bag.
Didn't Priscilla draw a picture of it?
Yeah.
And on the back is the Elk Grove citizen from 10 years ago today.
Hair's different color.
I've got pictures of his hair before. With that, I would like to invite our distinguished guests up, including all of you that are here. Pollyanna, don't go away, to take a group photo with Dr. Ladd in our standard place, and Tori will assist you in that. And we just appreciate all of you coming forward and doing this. Dr. Ladd is not going to hold a big celebration, so we figured out a way to recognize him anyway. So this was a surprise to him, as you might notice. And I'd also like his wife, Debbie, to come up. Oh, dear, should we go down and do these?
No, not till, I'll bring that forward later.
While they're taking a photo, I would like to also note that the City of Sacramento, City Council, who is, we have several schools in the City of Sacramento, also sent a resolution with the Mayor Kevin Johnson and all the city council members signing that. I might have to have help. Should I get these out to him? The City of Rancho Cordova, which is also in our district, parts of it, was also from the mayor, Dan Schockland, has a beautiful resolution for Dr. Ladd. The City of Elk Grove, signed by Mayor Gary Davis and all the council members, also has a resolution for Dr. Ladd in appreciation of his work with the city and all the youth. And the entire city of Elk Grove is in the Sacramento County, excuse me, in our Elk Grove School District. We also have Sacramento County, as Don Natoli is here. Thank you so much for allowing us his time to recognize our superintendent. He has, we have had the pleasure of serving with us, some of us, for all of his 10 years here, so we really appreciate that. Would you want to make a comment?
Just one quick comment. I am truly humbled by the support and this wonderful tribute that people have paid to me. It's humbling. It's been an honor to serve the community, to serve our wonderful students and families, to work with great staff members from principals and teachers and classified staff. People in Elk Grove remain student-focused and committed to our children. I'm eternally grateful for the privilege, and I'd like to thank my photo-shy wife for being there day in and day out, not just during my tenure in Elk Grove, but we've gone from one coast to the other, and each time we packed up and went, she did it with a smile and with an unwavering support. And as anybody knows, you don't do this job by yourself. And so, dear, I love you, and thank you very much.
We're going to be hard to have you go, of course, but there, now, the students, you've been waiting very patiently, and they're instructors, and you've done a remarkable job also at the Sacramento County Fair and State Fair. And I wanted to note that both of these events, for many of the students, were held when they were already out of school, and they still went on to do this as part of their FFA projects and continued to excel in that. So I will have Mr. Vertina help with the, sorry. You may know. And then I will invite Elk Grove High School up. Oh, wait, I have Kathy Hamilton, I didn't see you. Okay. Kathy Hamilton, I want to introduce.
Yes, hello. Thank you, President Cox, and good evening, board members, and Dr. Ladd and Ms. Heine. It's appropriate that, following up on the tribute to Dr. Ladd, we go right into recognition of some of our great career technical education programs, which he and you have long championed. So, yes, we are going to go alphabetically. So I am happy to introduce Mike Albiani, the coordinator of the FFA program at Elk Grove High, and he'll come up and tell you a little bit about some of his students who took awards at the county and state fair competitions.
Dr. Ladd, 25 years, well, 10 years ago when you first came here, I was darker-haired and didn't wear glasses to read. So we all get there. President Cox, members of the board, Dr. Ladd and Ms. Heine, first of all, I'd like to introduce Courtney Chaplin, our student teacher at Elk Grove High School that's working with us this year, and she's going to help identify the children, the students, as they come up, so that we don't, so that we can move right along. First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the time out of your agenda to recognize our students for their accomplishments at the California State Fair. This past May, over 160 of our Elk Grove FFA members exhibited, first at the Sacramento County Fair, most placing in their respective classes, winning awards and other recognitions. Tonight, I will presenting 27 students that represent the cream of the crop, the students that took their county fair experience to the next level to compete against the best in the state of California at the state fair. I will, normally, I don't, we don't introduce students that aren't here, but I have three students that I would like to introduce. One, because of their outstanding, incredible run they've made at the state fair, and also that this is a career-ending kind of a time for them. All three of them are away at college at this time, and so I'd like to go through, take just a minute of your time, to introduce those three students to you, so you can, one more time, be made aware of how outstanding some of our students perform under pressure. The first of those is Asia Solano Lim. Asia basically cleaned up in the small animal division at the California State Fair. She won small animal master showmanship, which means she was the best showman over all of the small animal species. She won pygmy showmanship, champion waterfowl, champion duck, reserve other standard breed poultry, and a whole host of other awards that were so long that they didn't fit on my Excel spreadsheet. She was an outstanding FFA member. She still has another year that she could participate, and I'm sure she'll apply for her American degree this winter for next year. She is currently at CSU Chico, studying there in agriculture. The second of those is another this year's graduate, and her name is Abby Carlson. Abby's been before, like Asia, in front of the board many other times. She was, Abby was selected as the outstanding exhibitor over all exhibitors at the California State Fair. She began that by becoming the outstanding dairy goat exhibitor, and then interviewed with the dignitaries there on the Board of Directors, and was selected as the outstanding exhibitor over all again. She also had the supreme champion dairy goat, the outstanding educational exhibit, and she won dairy goat showmanship and dairy round robin. So she was like the outstanding dairy exhibitor than the outstanding overall. So two outstanding young ladies that graduated this past May. She is at CSU Fresno currently. The last one, dear to my heart, in her last show ever, is Madison Albiani. And Madison had a pretty good end of her run. She had the calf champion shorthorn female. She was chosen as the outstanding shorthorn exhibitor, and also exhibited the outstanding educational display in the beef cattle area. She is at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. So those three young ladies, outstanding examples of what you can do and how they carry on, all three, in ag majors in college at this time. To go to those students that are here today, the first of those, a young man, he's a sophomore at Elk Grove High. His name is Andrew Feist, and Andrew had the supreme champion turkey at the California State Fair. Andrew maybe surprised himself, but he didn't surprise us. He's been working with the poultry for a long time, and he received $3,900 in the sale of champions for his supreme champion turkey. Where is he? Get up here. Following Andrew in the livestock show, Izzy Marini showed, had a, her was a third-place market hog, and she was also first place in her jams and jellies division that we run as a summer program through the, in the food science classrooms there at Elk Grove High. Also, Amanda Brown, fifth place with her market hog, first place with her jams and jellies. Are we getting here? Okay. Then Janay Haddon, Janay was second place with her Durock gilt in the swine breeding show. And Janay showing the other side is she was also best of the show for jams with her tomato-basil jam and also her caramel apple jam. They weren't together, they were separate entities. When we get into the jams and jelly division, Ms. Welch works in the summer and brings in the students, and they use, like I said, the food science classrooms to put together pickles and jams and jellies, and we have a number of students in those areas. Molly Felton with her best-of-class strawberry lemon marmalade. Carly Huss, best of division with the same variety of jam. Alana Peer, first place with her jams and jellies. Shelby Clifford, the same first. Chelsea DeTuri. Jasmine Lowe. Tyler Yates, we had to have at least one guy. It makes me just feel better when we have a boy show up. Kylie Beltrama Leon and Vicky Rosas Pio, all with their jams and jellies at this California State Fair, and we appreciate your giving them recognition. In closing, as you work through the new funding formula, I hope you will remember those things, that these type of programs take time and investment, not only from these students and from the teachers, but also from the district to continue. And I would like to invite you, on another note, to our dress rehearsal at Elk Grove High School on October 22nd. I will send you an invitation at 6:00 PM for the National Agri-science Fair competitors. That's their last practice before they go to nationals, and they look forward to being questioned by you and representing Elk Grove at the national contest in October. Thank you very much for your time.
Do we have an administrator from Elk Grove here tonight? Kathy? No? And definitely, parents, you're invited to take pictures, and we want to thank you for your support. I know that you're probably very involved with this also, being a former FFA parent.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Ladd, and Ms. Heine. On this night of special recognitions, we would like to add our appreciation, our congratulations, and our best wishes to Superintendent Ladd. We would like to thank the leadership of the school district for their continual support and promotion of career and technical education, as well as your investment in agriculture education. Thank you very much. And it is my pleasure tonight to recognize first two students who were extremely successful at this year's Sacramento County Fair. In the area of poultry, we had a student who showed two of the champion chickens at the fair, and her name was Mai Chi Summerlor. Please join me in congratulating Mai Chi for this accomplishment. Also at the county fair, we were pleased to have a student who showed the champion turkey, Karina Alcala. We also were able to show poultry and other animals and exhibits at the state fair, and we were very pleased to have our FFA chapter president, Ms. An Nguyen, receive the reserve supreme champion turkey. She also participated in the sale of champions and was able to receive $2,200 for her turkey. I would again like to thank you for your continual support and for this great honor for our students. Thank you very much.
And we have a couple of board members that want to raise turkeys now, so they want to And again, thank you to parents, and please feel free to come forward. Oh, is a principal here? Oh, Mr. Ross, there you are. Come on forward. Representing Pleasant Groves' fine ag program is Izzy Zallo. Representing Pleasant Grove's fine ag program is Izzy Zallo.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Lad, and Ms. Heine, and fellow guests. Joining me tonight, I have my teaching colleagues, Ms. Jessica Forrester up here helping me hand out the awards, Ms. Jenna Swenson hiding back there. And also, we have a, for the first time, we have a student-teacher this year from UC Davis, Ms. Jessica Hornbuckle, as well in the far back. Thank you, first of all, for always supporting the outstanding agriculture programs within our district. And in doing so, I hope you realize that you know the true value that the FFA programs have in developing leadership in our, leadership abilities in our students, and we greatly appreciate that. And we wish you all the best of luck, Dr. Lad, and we appreciate that you helped man the gate at our football game last Friday. Thank you very much for helping out. We have several students who weren't able to make it here tonight, but they are familiar names to you all because they have been up here in the past, but they are very busy with college. But I wanted to recognize those students. Kelsey Kennickett, who has been a strong student as far as a variety of animal projects, but she did really well when it came to county fair, she was, or at state fair, she was the champion poultry exhibitor in the Champion Challenge, along with the grand champion small animal exhibitor, and did really well in all of her rabbits and cavies and dog as well. So she did really well. She's just graduated this past May and will be going to CRC in hopes to transfer to UC Davis to be a large animal vet. Next, we have Riley Quinn. This is, this was actually her last year showing in FFA, but you've heard her name before, and she did excellent both at county fair and state fair. At county fair, she had the Supreme Champion Market Hog, the Champion Cross-Bred Hog, and also received second place in the FFA Advanced Swine Showmanship. She showed rabbits at state fair and had the Grand Champion Single Friar Rabbit and the Reserve Grand Champion Rabbit Meat Pin. So she pretty much swept that pretty well. And then last that I want to mention of our graduates, Sierra Withrow. She showed goats at California State Fair and received the Reserve Grand Champion Alpine Goat, second place in Dairy Goat Showmanship and Dairy Master Showmanship. She received third place. And so she is studying at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And I forgot to mention Riley's at Chico State, if you didn't know. So they're all good ag kids moving on to study ag, so just wanted to mention that. Tonight, we have six other students who also participated in our current students who participated in county fair and/or state fair. And first coming up is Sydney Edwards, and she has really strong goat projects, a strong sheep project in her 4H, but some accolades. She has a lot on her certificate, and I know we're short on time. So she wanted me to let you know that she got the FFA Advanced Goat Showmanship. She got first place in that at county fair, which moved her on to Large Animal Master Showmanship, and she won that. And that's where she shows all the other species, so she did excellent on that. And then at state fair, she did really well with showmanship and actually placed first place with her breeding doe, and she's very proud of that. Congratulations. Next, we have Ryan Hughes. He shows market sheep and receives second place at the FFA Advanced Sheep Showmanship at county fair. And also, this year, he had a crossbred ewe and was the Reserve Grand Champion Cross-Bred Ewe at county fair. Congratulations. Next, we have Kelsey Jones, and she has really strong poultry projects, turkeys and chickens, and she received second place in FFA Turkey Showmanship at county fair. Next, we have Emmy Rop Phillips, and she has a lot of strong projects, rabbits, cavies, and other animals, and so she received FFA Advanced Cave Showmanship. She actually won that at county fair this year. Next, we have Michelle Utterback, who is very proud to be showing turkeys and received fourth place with Turkey Showmanship at county fair this year. And last but not least, we have Mackenzie Woods, and she has really strong cattle, beef cattle projects, and she has a lot of accolades as well on her certificate like Sidney did. But the main ones she wants you to know are that she got the Champion Hereford Steer at county fair, and then at state fair, she got the Reserve Champion Angus Cow Calf Pair and won the Junior Angus Herdsman Award. So thank you very much once again. Have a wonderful evening.
There you are. I thought I saw you. Come on forward, the principal of Pleasant Grove High School. And parents and friends, please come forward if you'd like to take pictures. And again, thank you to the parents for all your support. And finally, we have Jim Looper, who's the coordinator of our excellent ag program at Sheldon High School.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Dr. Lad and Ms. Heine. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our students. I do recognize that we're here to recognize the students, but we've heard this before. Dr. Lad, you're a class act. You'll be missed. Thank you for your years of service, dedication, support to our programs. Enjoy retirement. You know, it's really because of the support of all of you that have given over the years that our programs can offer the FFA members, our students, such a variety of, offer students to become engaged in their education. And whether that be an academic competition, opportunity to travel across the country for a conference, compete in a speech competition, there's many opportunities to learn as a result of the ag programs. And the one that I'm here to talk about tonight really is the raising of livestock. And livestock is an amazing way for students to become engaged in their education, to have some fun, but also produce wholesome nutritious food, which we all know is so important. Caring for these animals doesn't just take place from 7:45 to 3:00 or during normal school hours, but night times, weekends, and it's really all day, every day. And the students constantly come in to assure that animals have fresh feed and water, they manage their environmental conditions, in addition to the infamous shoveling of manure. And it's all hard work, without a doubt. However, the Sacramento County Fair, as well as the state fair, offers the students a way to showcase their hard work by showing their animals. And tonight, I'd like to present some of the success that our students have received at these two fairs. So the first is definitely no stranger to winning at both the state fair or the county fair. She's a young lady who got her start early in her freshman year. She had a grand champion way back when at the state fair. She held on to her rabbits, and she's bred them year after year. And I think that's perhaps one of the reasons why tonight she's being recognized for having the grand champion at the Sacramento County Fair and fifth place at the state fair for her single friar rabbits, and that is Ms. Karina Garcia. Now, the county fair has also awarded our students who work so tirelessly on raising their broiler meat pins. And again, many of these students, they find a home in the FFA, so you're going to recognize many of their names as they've been up here in the past. With our fifth place pen of market broilers, I'd like to have Ms. Evelyn Booty come up, In fourth place, we had Jessica Chinkah. And in third place, we had Mr. Marcellus Crumble. We did receive the reserve champion, and the young lady who received that is off at school as well. And, you know, she wanted to be here very much, but Ms. Haley Bambula actually received a champion with her birds over the last four years. Over those four years, she raised, she earned about $7,000, and it definitely helps her in her educational endeavors. So again, thank you for these opportunities. As soon as our county fair is over, we actually start the very next day raising a second flock of birds. And the students who exhibit these birds at the state fair, they must commit, again, to working every day over the summer. And this group of students have definitely shown their dedication, their commitment, their ability to work as a team, to persevere through tough times, and they were each highly valued in their efforts by being, this year, as a group, we were awarded the grand as well as reserve champion meat pen, as well as places three, four, five, and six. And I'd like to start off by having our, the young lady who exhibited the grand champion chickens, Ms. Cassandra Lazzardi. Can you please join us? I'm going to have to call Ms. Jessica Chinkah off the stage to receive the next recognition for her reserve champion that she received at the state fair. Both these young ladies sold their birds at the sale of champions, and they each received in the neighborhood of about $1,200, $1,150 and $1,250 for their birds. So the community definitely recognized the hard work as well. Congratulations, girls. Our fourth place pen of birds went to a very committed sophomore and last year's grand Our fourth place pen of birds was awarded to a senior, Ms. Cassandra Cheek. And the fifth place went to a very cheerful and positive freshman, Ms. Annabella Escobedo. Now, I think all these amazing young kids know how proud I am of them and their hard work, and thank you for showing them tonight your support as well.
Thank you on your excellent work, and to our instructors also for, I know they work really hard, and to our parents. And you're welcome to come forward and take pictures.
And we have, yes. A vice principal from Sheldon High School.
You don't get away. No, no, no. Thank you, and congratulations to everyone. At this time, we have no student expulsions or no LCAP update and no budget update, but we are going to go on to item 9A because we have a couple folks here that are here to present that, and then we'll go back to our regularly scheduled agenda. And 9A is a recommendation of a name for a Culinary Arts Institute, and I would like
President Cox and members of the board, it is my pleasure to bring this item forward to you. It is for the naming of the Culinary Arts Institute at Casamna Soaks High School. And I have here a letter that is signed by a large number of community members, community, school, and business members, supporting this idea. And I have to say that as the advisor to the naming committee, it is really my pleasure to do this, that the name for the Culinary Institute, Culinary Arts Institute at Casamna Soaks High School would be the Stephen M. Lad Culinary Arts Institute. You've seen the many signatures on the letters, and you've seen the letter from Patrick McDougall, the principal of the high school, and I totally support that, that we would always have something to remember, Dr. Lad, by. So I leave that in your hands now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for this. Dr. Lad did not know this was on the agenda, so, and one thing you don't want to do to a superintendent is surprise him, so I hope you forgive us for this surprise because we had a resounding support from the community. And the letter included that during your tenure, you reinforced the rigor and programmatic offerings of career technical education, concentrated on reinventing existing academies, establishing new academies to better niche California's changing industry landscape. And an example of this area is showcased at Casamna Soaks High School, where you helped ensure that the broadcast journalism pathway had a studio and equipment. The architectural design and engineering academy built the platinum LEED-certified R-House as a training facility for students and a learning destination for elementary students. Your vision of the Culinary Arts Academy was the intersection of science, English language arts, business skills, and character education with enticing fields of gastronomy, hospitality, tourism, and recreation. And you personally sat on the business budget design team of the Culinary Arts Academy for this state-of-the-art facility, which is now enjoyed by students, staff, parents, and the larger community.
Now, does he get a free pass to always eat there, too?
So with that, I will open it up for discussion from the board. If the board members would like to make comments. We have a motion already.
Second.
And a second. Several seconds. Because that's part of the food part, huh? Getting seconds.
Comment.
And then we would like to make, if anyone would like to make comments from the board on Dr. Lad's honor here. Mr. Madison, you may start.
I'll start off with the vision piece of it. Casamna Soaks High School was our last school built before the Great Recession that set in with us. The planning and construction was somewhat set prior to Dr. Lad's arrival to our district, actually. Shortly after Dr. Lad became our CEO, he envisioned something that we did not see as a board. His vision of a Culinary Art Institute for our students that Casamna Soaks High Schools would share with facilities departments, with the board, and the public. Approval was given, and we proceeded on with the construction of the revision of that plan. We went forward. Now standing is a state-of-the-art Culinary Art Institute building that is recognized as one of Elk Grove Unified School District's many high-achieving schools. Dr. Lad, your name on a Culinary Art Institute building at Casamna Soaks High School is well-deserving. We, as a board, have a difficult task finding another CEO that will lead up this large school district with continued academic success and community involvement. It has been a privilege and an honor to work with you for almost 10 years. Enjoy your retirement, and you and Debbie give my best, too. Thank you so much.
I can't believe we've come to this moment, Dr. Lad. You know, the, from the first moment that I met you to this particular moment, I've just been impressed and really honored to have the privilege of working with you. I can't begin to express the number of things that I've learned from you. And the moment that I first met you, I'd mentioned to you that I am always in admiration of folks who have dedicated their life to education, and you are one of those. You have, you have created a big footprint that's going to be very difficult to match with the next superintendent. And, you know, in the Ammon culture, whenever somebody embarks on a journey, we always wish them well. And in this particular occasion, it's really not goodbye, but it's really you opening up the next chapter of your life and continuing on to do the- conference and I had the badge Bobby Singh Allen Elker of Unified School District. I cannot begin to tell you how many people came up that spoke about great things about what a wonderful superintendent we had and how envious they were of Elker of Unified. And it does start with you. It takes a great leader to guide us on a journey. And that journey has been tremendous. 62,000 children have benefited from that this year and in years past. My two children certainly have benefited from your leadership and guidance. And as a school board member, as a newer school board member, you have always made yourself available to help me learn more, how I could become a better school board member. You've always been gracious with your time and your professionalism. And it's, it's a, it's a somber moment in us, in the respect that, you know, you're leaving this great legacy and you've leaving this amazing shoes to fill. I don't know what that next chapter is gonna look like, but I can only begin to hope that we will be blessed with someone that has even half of your talent and guidance. So I want to thank you for all that you have done. Sincerely.
Well, I don't think this is the last time I'm gonna see you, and it better not be. But as Pollyanna mentioned earlier, when, when we decided to, we were thinking about hiring you, Priscilla and Pollyanna and I, we took a trip down there. And the minute I met you, you know, and talked to all the people and we went to lunch that day, I knew we had a winner. And we met Debbie and, you know, it was, it was, it was like we knew you guys already, you know? It was just so welcoming. And I could, I can't remember, I mean, I remember the time when you guys came up and I drove you around the district. And that's when I realized what a fantastic mind and memory you had. And, and we were driving around and he would always say, well, wait a minute, we already went this way, you gotta go back this way. And it was the first time he'd ever been in this district. And Deb said, you haven't seen anything yet. And she was right, you know? That mind you have. And, oh, I don't know. I don't know if I can go on. Anyway, I hope you stay in the community. I wanna see you and Deb more often. And Bill Lugg sends his, his regards and he couldn't be here. I didn't think you would leave before me, but you'd beaten me by a few months. And, and I can tell you that those who are left on this board will not know how much you're gonna be missed until they're gone. So, thank you for being my friend and colleague and I'll never forget you guys.
First of all, I guess it's my cultural heritage, we don't say goodbye. I've been blessed to sit on this board and experience a lot of beautiful things within the last two years since election. And I recall the first time I met you, this gentleman, Mr. Ladd, Dr. Ladd, was in our community doing a fundraiser for our district. And I heard about him, but I never envisioned how he would look. But he was a mist with everybody. He was on the grassroots, you know, community, working the crowd and working the community and making things happen at this big event fundraiser. And since, and that's always made everlasting impression on me, how you could walk the walk and you could walk anywhere and be welcome and come across people at all levels of life. And, and, and this community is very lucky that this gentleman came into our lives within this area and through thick and thin, through highs and lows, he, he made a lot of things happen. And not only him, it's the staff that did it. And it was a heck of a team effort. And you're there out there and I know you all appreciate what he's done. We're very fortunate and I hope, I know you will stick around in our community and make more things happen because we have a lot of work to do. Thank you very much.
And Dr. Ladd, we've heard a lot of certainly good things said about you tonight and, and I know those are all appreciated. The one thing I'd like to focus on is, is the reason why the recommendation came in to name the Culinary Arts Institute, the Stephen M. Ladd. And that has been your passion and your vision for career technical education. We know the importance of these programs for our students. We know the importance for their futures. And before career technical education really became a term that people used, you were in the forefront to see the value of that in our schools. And, and so this is a well deserved honor and appreciate all that you did. Thank you.
Thank you. And we haven't had an official vote yet, but I will comment that on behalf of the board, we have, we know your love of the culinary experience. And so I am continuing education. So we have, are giving you a gift certificate for Culinary Institute, continuing education, and you can bring back information for your, for your newly named institute. And with that, I will, I think we have a motion and several seconds. And if there's no other comments, I will call for a roll call vote on naming the new Culinary Institute, the Stephen M. Ladd Culinary Arts Institute.
Absolutely yes.
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 Yes, well, thank you. It's a unanimous vote and we are thankful for your role too, Elizabeth, and for Kathy Zinder.
My role was small, but one thing, be sure that he gets copies of all those letters because he will want to have them. And we'll all look forward to being at the Culinary Arts Institute for meals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? We were really, really, really cautious because it was really hard to keep things from him. And I saw him when we were talking about, you know, he was sitting there looking for 9A, agenda 9A. And I go, look at him, he's looking for it. But we did it. We got him.
And I want to publicly thank Kathy Zinder for all her work behind the scenes on this and, and he's looking at it. She'll make sure you get the letters because they're, they contain the community and the school views about your impact on us and how much you've done to improve the lives of our students and our staff and community. So we really appreciate it. So now we have, we're getting on to our regularly scheduled board agenda. And, but, yeah, so it will be probably a long night, but it's, it's your fault because we're having to do progressive recognition instead of all at once. Next on our agenda is our public comment and we have two cards from people requesting to address the board on items that are not on the agenda. And you will have three minutes each and please observe the timeline limit. And we have Susan Mason, followed by Catherine Durham.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Dr. Ladd, Luff, and Ms. Hines. My name is Susan Mason. Tonight I would like to ask the board some questions and make a few comments about your search for a new superintendent. Will you ask what the candidate's assessment of Common Core National Standards is? And what do they see as the future for Common Core at Elk Grove Unified School District? Will you admit to a mistake that needs to be redone? This is a great opportunity to repeal implementation of these copyrighted standards, the whole program which includes the testing, some curriculum, and the textbooks which are aligned with the standards. How does a candidate feel about the loss of local and state control of education? Will the candidate, if selected, go back to the former standards? How will this be accomplished? Will teachers be allowed to teach the way they want to and what they want to accomplish the goal? How does a candidate feel about the district being mandated to share identifiable student information? How much independent research has a candidate done on the opposition across the country to Common Core National Standards? Will the candidate, if selected, use the staff to prepare presentations that are talking points only, or will the candidate ask the staff hard questions? Will the candidate, if selected, hold the school board accountable for past decisions that were made? I can only assume that Dr. Ladd, as a current superintendent, authorized implementation of the Common Core and requested that the board approve his decision. I continue to wonder how much information was presented to the board. Did the board also approve by voting to implement Common Core? Was there transparency and where can I find that information? I would like to present pocket constitutions to those remaining on the board. Please look to see if the federal government has any authority to tell the state or district what to do and how to do it. You won't find it. Instead, under the 10th Amendment ratified effective December 15th, 1791, you will find these words, quote, "The power is not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it to the states, are reserved to the states respectively or to the people," end quote. And that includes education. Your decision in selecting the next superintendent is crucial to the district's mission of educating students today and the leaders of tomorrow. I ask that you consider these questions with your head and with your heart. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next is Catherine Van. Is she here? I do not see her coming forward. Our reports, Dr. Ladd's giving the report next. So I think, you ready, Mr. Perez? That's her. We'll go to number six and then when he returns, we can go back to the report. This is a public hearing action item and these are, oh, you, you have one, correct?
Definitely fitting because when I was supposed to give this report last time, I was in the lobby, so that's right. So this is actually a follow-up to the resolution. We okay? You want me to just turn around and go back where I came from?
Yeah. Sorry, I miss bargaining units. I am so sorry. Oh, you want Dr. Ladd to be, okay. Mr. Perez should get to come back up. I hope you're wearing a pedometer.
He didn't leave the room this time.
Boy, that's two meetings in a row. It's just been a little weird coming up here. Well, thank you, President Cox, members of the board, Dr. Ladd and Ms. Hine. This is a quick, I hope, follow-up to a in-depth conversation that we had on August 19th where the board adopted a resolution of intention to convey three separate easements to the Toque Park Water District. Mr. Larry Stam was here tonight. He actually had to skedaddle and run off to the South Gate Park and Recreation Board meeting because they are also granting similar easements at their meeting tonight. So he couldn't stick around and thank the board for the last action. I'd be happy to go back over any of the conversation that we had on the 19th, but you held a public hearing. There were no comments. We received nonsense. So I would seek approval of the resolution.
I'd like to move approval of resolution conveying.
Oh, wait, I have to do the public hearing first and then we will. But, yeah. I would like to open a public hearing and receive any comments on the convey of easements. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and then I will call for a motion, Mr. Regina.
And now I will move approval of resolution conveying various permanent easements to the Toque Park Water Company.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consideration of resolution to convey various easements to the Toque Park Water District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously by all members present. And yours up for item number eight for our initial proposal to PISWA.
Yes, since I'm here, I'd like to do the same for the Psychologists and Social Workers Association, PSWA, for the 2014-2015 collective bargaining process. It is recommended that after the closure of the public hearing, the board take action to approve the district's initial proposal to PISWA.
I'd like to call for a public hearing. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve the proposal of Elk Grove Unified School District to PISWA.
That's seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial proposal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously by all members present. And now we will go back to item. Bargaining units and then item five.
I should be speaking to all of you, but tonight I want to speak with, to Dr. Ladd as the podium sinks. Dr. Ladd, I wish that I could be up here railing against the inequities, as you know I have been able to do in the past, but not tonight. If we'd known about this tonight, I think we would have been better prepared to talk more about what you have meant to, to our union, what you have meant to me personally. I want to spend a couple of minutes tonight talking about that if I can. I suspect you're not one for mushy, long goodbyes and, and a lot of ceremony, but, and, and these days I tend to cry at the drop of a hat. So I'm not gonna stand on that, on ceremony either.
District initial proposal to the amalgamated transit union ATU for 2014-2015 collective bargaining pursuant to Government Code Section 3547. The following are stipulated for negotiations between a bargaining unit and the district. The district's initial proposal is officially presented at a public meeting of the governing board for public notice and a public hearing is conducted to receive public input regarding the district's initial proposal. It is recommended that after the closure of the public hearing, the board take action to approve the district's initial proposal to ATU.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on the initial proposal from the district to ATU. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve the proposal. It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposal from the district, initial proposal from the district to ATU. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously by all members present. And yours up for item number eight for our initial proposal to PISWA.
Yes, since I'm here, I'd like to do the same for the Psychologists and Social Workers Association, PSWA, for the 2014-2015 collective bargaining process. It is recommended that after the closure of the public hearing, the board take action to approve the district's initial proposal to PISWA.
I'd like to call for a public hearing. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve the proposal of Elk Grove Unified School District to PISWA. It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial proposal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously by all members present. And now we will go back to item- Bargaining units and then item five.
Well, good evening, everybody. I should be speaking to all of you, but tonight I want to speak with, to Dr. Ladd as the podium sinks. Dr. Ladd, I wish that I could be up here railing against the inequities, as you know I have been able to do in the past, but not tonight. If we'd known about this tonight, I think we would have been better prepared to talk more about what you have meant to our union, what you have meant to me personally. I want to spend a couple of minutes tonight talking about that if I can. I suspect you're not one for mushy, long goodbyes and a lot of ceremony, but, and these days I tend to cry at the drop of a hat, so I'm not going to stand on that, on ceremony either. But on behalf of the union and on behalf of me personally, we wish you a sweet, happy journey on the next leg of your life. Here I go. You've made a difference in the life of the union. You've made a difference personally to me in how I see leadership, in how I see professionalism, in how I see the exchange of ideas between two co-equals. And I appreciate what I have learned from you. I think you've been a great leader for the district. You know, I've been around since Hector was a pup and I was here when you got here. And I have been known to say in the past that I was here when you got here and I'll be here when you go. That means something different to me tonight because I'm really actually sad to see you go. I think you really have been a boon to this district. And I think whoever comes along after you has, really does have large shoes to fill. And that's a testament to you that will stand longer than your tenure here. And I think as a professional, that's probably the best thing you can take away is knowing that you made a difference and knowing that we know that you made a difference. So I want to thank you on behalf of our union. I want to thank you on my behalf personally. I'm going to miss our little exchanges. I'm going to, because we've had a few. I'm going to miss our book chats. And when I come back from my own little journey over the weekend, I'm going to track you down before you go because I have something for you that I think you will remember the union and remember me for. But let me just sum it up by saying thank you for gracing us with your presence and your knowledge and your professionalism. We won't forget you.
There you go. And I was just here to hold her up.
I concur with Nancy on a lot, but I'm not going to cry. I don't drop, I don't cry yet. It's coming, not yet. I was at the beginning of my first presidency when you came and I'm at the end of my second presidency as you leave. So it's kind of an interesting parallel there. There's been some hard times and there's been some very good times. And I know the next superintendent, just like every superintendent before you, has had their difficulties and their successes. And the next one's going to have their own unique difficulties and successes. But we will get through them, just as we have during your 10 years, almost 10 years here. And I have to thank you for your commitment to our labor management, collaboration, and reinstilling that belief and that foundation with all of the management in the district and that you've put us on the right path again. And so I thank you for that commitment. And I'm sure that Kate will bend your ear every once in a while to make sure she keeps her connection with you. I hope that that Harley gets out of the garage a little more often, that that flat spot's not going to be there as long as it has been. And I think I have a trip maybe to a Harley's store before you leave and we'll connect up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Deutsch, CSEA.
Nancy Eastman, Labor Rep for CSEA.
I think, you know, we used to come up here quite often and we used to do attitude of gratitude. And we named names. We always have. Before, we named the big guy. We do have to name a gratitude that we do have to Mark Ceruti. Last time we met in board session, I did grab him for our bilinguals and brought him out and our bilinguals with an interpreter from our district, did speak from their heart, and we did get to resolve some issues. We can resolve a lot more issues, but it was a great start and we do appreciate that. Thank you. And I'd like to also put an attitude of gratitude to Sue Larson, who followed up that meeting. And we were able to actually get a lot done and have the placement that is needed for our parents, our students, our community. So we do appreciate that and we do look forward to doing more.
Yeah, we do. The lines of communication are definitely opening and we do appreciate that. You will be approving an MOU tonight between the Target Excellence Program and the district for the After-School ACES Program. It's agenda item 29C. We just want to take this opportunity to remind the district that historically, our CSEA paraeducators, staff ACES, we've been the first choice of hire in this program, even though it's not our bargaining unit work. Recently, however, CSEA has noticed that our members are not working or being considered to work in the ACES. And we're going to work with Dr. Kruger to identify what the issues are around that. We haven't had a chance to do that, so I want to be clear. But we do want to point out, in the Target Excellence MOU, under the Target Excellence rules, roles and responsibilities, all staff members who directly supervise students in ACES shall meet the minimum qualifications for a paraeducator in the district. And we're just not sure that's happening. Again, we're going to work with the district to identify what's going on there. We realize how important ACES is to families, so CSEA wants to help you continue to make it work and send the message to sites to hire our folks first. Thanks.
Now, we know it's not a final goodbye. It never is because goodbyes don't last that long. But we do want to say thank you. You have tremendous accolades, this district, this community, the families that you have served. It doesn't go unnoticed. We appreciate that you have a building named after you. We appreciate that you're going to be having CSEA come over and eat at that building. And maybe we can start a chain called Laddie's instead of Denny's. But we do want to say that we thank you for your service. We thank you for the many roads that we have traveled together and we usually find the same destination in the end.
Thank you all. And then we get to go to number five, Dr. Ladd's report on the Ford Next Generation Learning Affiliate Track Community.
Madam President, members of the board, members in the audience, this evening, we're bringing the recommendation and the good news, in my opinion, of having Elk Grove be considered for a next-generation learning affiliate track community. The Ford Foundation has been in our district, part of our district, since 2007. I was able to meet with Cheryl Carrier and begin that relationship. Kristi Moustres was there. Many of our teachers were part of that process. We've passed that torch now to Kathy Hamilton and Sue Hubbard. One of the things that I would say, and I'll turn it over to Kathy Hamilton to speak about this, is that we have served our community and the rest of the country with our relationship with Ford by sharing what we learn about link learning. The one thing that I will say in a conversation that I had earlier with Mr. Fortina that really is something that we're going to work hard to overcome, and that is the Ford work is just part of what we do in link learning. And I went back and pulled four or five of the board communications and nowhere did it say Ford. And so it's not surprising that the newer board members may not be as familiar or familiar at all with Ford and the work, but it really is just one of the elements that we use as characteristics or tools that allow us to do the wonderful work, career, technical education. We really do believe, because of your leadership and the leadership of this community, our staff and our administrators, classified staff, that it's college and career. It's not college or career. It's and career. And we think that coming across the stage, graduating from our school district, we want to ensure that every student has the tools to go to an apprentice program, to be an electrician, or an electrical engineer, or anything in between. And we want them to be successful in our career technical education is being recognized with this recommendation to start the process to be a Ford next-generation learning community. I'm going to ask Kathy to share more with you at this time.
Good evening again, everybody. As Dr. Ladd said, this recognition is just another facet of the hard work that we've been doing over the past several years, not only with career technical education, but the link learning work that we've started in the last two years. So, sorry about that. First, I'd like to give you just some background about what Ford Next Generation Learning is. Something that Pollyanna Cooper-Lavangi said when she was here earlier, she mentioned in her litany of accomplishments that have come to this district through Dr. Ladd, she mentioned Ford Pass. And Ford Pass might be something that some of you remember. That was the previous incarnation of what is now Ford Next Generation Learning. Ford Next Generation Learning, as Dr. Ladd said, is resources. It's support. It is in alignment with the work that we've been doing for the past more than 20 years, focusing on career academies and career pathway programs. The Ford Next Generation Learning is a charitable organization within the Ford Fund, the Ford Motor Company Fund, and it provides resources, strategies, and tools to address the challenges of preparing young people for college and career success, promoting community transformation. And I just kind of want to underscore that community transformation concept. It's very critical. And economic growth within our local community and our region through relevant education that is aligned with regional workforce needs. And it's also a resource for teachers, to involve teachers, students, parents, and the community in this transformational work. Ford NGL has a number of long-term outcomes and they are specifically to increase academic achievement, improve preparation for college and career in life, increase high school graduation rates, increase earnings potential, and increase prosperity, community prosperity. And I just added this slide. You don't have it and you're all looking for it. You know, I'm sorry about that.
You know how it feels.
I should know better, but I thought this really nicely, this one graphic really nicely illustrated what Ford NGL is and helped you see how it aligns so well with our school district's goals. So to summarize, Ford NGL's goals are to improve students' achievement, increase their understanding and preparation for post-secondary opportunities, and to develop educators' capacity to use real-world curriculum, teaching strategies, to integrate our academics and our career technical education, to collaborate with their peers, and to engage with their business and community partners. You could almost copy that and say that's a definition for link learning. So how does this come around full circle to our district? As, well, so it should be noted that a significant aspect of Ford NGL's vision for student success, as I mentioned, is the involvement of the greater community. And that Ford in looking at Elk Grove is really trying to amplify the accomplishments that we've had in this district, but also that our community has had. And I think it's very fitting that you heard so many community members tonight calling out Dr. Ladd, but also indirectly our whole district, because that really is what this is about, is its community involvement, its community transformation. And this recognition by Ford to become a community that's affiliated with Ford Next Generation Learning is in recognition of those efforts that we've all put forth. It aligns with other recognitions that our district has received recently, in addition to becoming one of 19 national Ford NGL communities. We also have been invited or recognized as one of 20 linked learning projects through the AB 790 legislation and just this spring, one of 39 recipients of the California Pathway Trust Grants. So now we've got three major, major recognitions for our career technical education, our academies and our pathways, and our collaboration with post-secondary education and community. As I mentioned, we've been working with Ford NGL for six years originally, when it was called Ford Pass. And initially, that was more of a focus on curriculum and professional development. And in that capacity, we were identified as the Northern California Ford NGL Hub, or a training group that largely under Kristi Moustres and Sue Hubbard, who's here tonight, has been one of the trainers. We've trained over 400 educators, teachers, administrators, from our district in Northern California in project-based learning and real-world activities. So just to give you an idea of what Ford NGL looks like, you can see that most of the communities that have been designated as a Ford learning community are in the southeast or the east. And California is only the second one in California and really the second one west of Missouri. So we're really excited to be part of this expanding national community. Let's look a little bit more closely about how Ford NGL aligns with link learning. Both link, well, link learning, if you think of that as the umbrella, and Ford NGL and the CCPT or Career Pathway Trust Program, both recognize that link learning is a research-driven, proven approach for college and career readiness. It, link learning, Ford NGL, the CPT, all support the integration of strong, rigorous academic and technical skills aligned with work-based learning and the role of our community, and the development of leadership and 21st century skills in our students. As a result of that, we end up with students who are college and career-ready. So we talk about transformation a lot and, you know, Ford NGL, the state, link learning, when they start talking about transformation, you often hear transformation of secondary education. But in reality, this movement, this approach, is about the transformation of the United States workforce. We have seen through a variety of different reports and studies over the last five to 10 years that the United States lags in educational attainment, that our economic prosperity is directly linked to the level of an individual's post-secondary education, that our economy needs workers with various levels of post-secondary education, not just a bachelor's degree or master's degree or professional degree, but we need most of our workers to have some kind of post-secondary training. We see that there's a rising demand for individuals with strong employability and STEM skills. And we know that the retirement, the impending retirement of our baby boomers is going to leave a lot of job openings on the horizon and we're going to need a skilled workforce for that. So what urgency there is in link learning is not necessarily a reflection of anything that we have done or not done in our district, but it's, it's a transformation of the way that our business community, our community at large, and our K-12 programs prepare students for the future workforce. Link learning, and you've seen some of this before, but now I'm throwing in an additional component here. Does link learning work? What's the urgency behind it? You've heard me say before that link learning does have an impact on our learners. And you can see here that it's supported also by districts who are in Ford NGL communities, that students who are in career academy programs have a higher degree of success in their graduation rate, their suspension rate is lower than non-academy students, their AP pass rate is higher than non-academy students, and their GPA tends to be higher. So this is true in our district. It's true across the nation. All right, so what does it mean to be a Ford NGL community? Well, it's not necessarily a Ford NGL community, although this is their recognition. It's a link learning community. And as you all know, we have been working over the last seven months, eight months, on the development of our Elk Grove Community Master Plan for link learning. So it just dovetails perfectly with that work that Ford is now recognizing that community effort. The work that we have done, some of you have been on our focus group or on our stakeholder groups, our leadership team. We have been using resources from ConnectEd, which is a California-based organization. But the Ford NGL framework has really guided the structure of the tactical plans that we've created and the- created and the master plan that we're working on. Over 100 community stakeholders from a variety of venues have been involved in this work. And over the next several months, I'm going to be bringing that product back for your recognition. And that includes our graduate profile and the identification of our outcomes and the development of our final plan, all of which were informed by a needs and capacity assessment study. Some of the desired outcomes that will be addressed, not tonight, Roy. Sorry, you're getting me off track there. Okay, so the master plan. What is the master plan going to be? The master plan will address how we are going to attack some of the desired outcomes that were identified by our, all of the desired outcomes that were identified by our community stakeholders. And some of these outcomes are listed here. This is, we didn't have enough room to list them all. But you can see, for example, that the first one was the development of a graduate profile, and that, in fact, is going to be the first thing that I'm going to bring back for your review and hopefully for your approval. And so finally, next steps in this process, our community stakeholders will review our master plan at the end of this month on September 23rd, in fact. In November, we will bring the graduate profile to you, as I said, for consideration and approval. We will present the master plan to you in December, and hopefully your approval in January. And then there will be an official, an actual ceremony that Ford NGL will help us put on to designate Elk Grove as being affiliated as a Ford, as a Ford Next Generation Learning community. This isn't just a one-time thing, the planning or the ceremony or the designation. And afterwards, we have to continue with the implementation of our plan. It's a five-year plan with a number of two-year tactics, tactical plans within it. And we will reconvene our stakeholders annually, every year, to review our progress against this plan and to hold us accountable for doing the work that's described within. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Well, thank you. You've done a tremendous amount of work already, and I know this has been really key to much of our development of our linked learning and our career technical education and our academy models. So I'm, and it looks like it's going to be ongoing. This is a report that you'll be coming back to us with additional information as you go through these steps. So open it up to any questions from the board, anything that someone would like to comment on, Mr. Madison?
I'll let him go.
Oh, Mr. Virginia, I didn't see you. Go ahead. It's too polite.
Thank you. I have comments rather than questions. I had the opportunity today to meet with Sue Hubbard, Kathy Hamilton, and Dr. Ladd, and review a whole set of questions that I had submitted relative to Ford NGP and our relationship with Ford. Certainly with, based on previous meetings had with Kathy and Dr. Ladd, and my work with teachers and my visits, I certainly had a good understanding of our career technical education program. What was surprising to me is that I had no knowledge of Ford and our involvement with Ford and the relationship that all of our programs have with the philosophy behind the program. And I think we all learned today that a lot of times, we are so busy doing the day-to-day work and are proud of that work that we forget to share it. And so I think we all learned a lot today. I was, I was really encouraged as I had my questions answered and I had the opportunity to ask additional questions and to clarify that what this, the Ford NGL says to me is that there's an established program with a philosophy and a direction that can be utilized by districts like Elk Grove, who have the people, who have the vision, who are involved and see the benefit of providing programs to all the children, because really, that's at the core of all this. It provides, it provides those pathways for all the children, whether they're seeking a college education or a career education. So I just, I just want to say, I am just, just thrilled that this work is being done on behalf of the students in our district, and I say thank you.
Yeah, I really don't have any questions either. I just want to come in and thank Dr. Ladd, too, for his heavily involvement, his leadership with the Ford Foundation, and we really appreciate it, Dr. Ladd. We're going to miss you on that. And certainly Kathy, you and Sue Hubbard, your fine work and all the training. I've had the opportunity to attend some of those training sessions, and it's, it's been well done. I really appreciate it. So I look forward to seeing the development of the graduate profile, too. That'll be very interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the report. As you know, this is something that I hold close to my heart, and I'm glad you're doing the good work. So continue to give us more information as you come upon it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I echo a lot of the same comments. You know, it's one of the many things that we get to wear, that badge of honor, when we go about our daily lives with state leaders particularly. They definitely recognize Elk Grove Unified as a leader in linked learning and career and technical education. I remember last year, I think it might have been, when the California Career Pathway Trust, the press conference that a few of us attended with Senator Steinberg and a number of others. So I mean, this is just one of those amazing things that we are doing and really are a regional and statewide leader. I do have one question, because I do like data in terms of understanding what the students look like and where they're coming from. On page four, so I don't know if, I have it on page four, I'm not sure what slide number it's in your PowerPoint. It says linked learning and student outcomes on top. EGUSD 12, let's see.
Page four.
It's page four on our, yes, that one.
There you go.
So is it possible to get a little bit more data in terms of ethnicity, and so we can see the diversity and the inclusiveness, and the sort of, maybe even a geographic breakdown?
I'm not sure that we have it. Sue, do we have it geographically yet?
Not geographically.
Okay, but definitely we have it broken down by ethnicity and a couple of other subgroups, English learners, and I think low socioeconomic, and probably special ed.
Okay, very good.
So I can give that to you for two years.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
All right.
This partnership with Ford is a tremendous, tremendous partnership. What, six years it's been going on now? Okay, I didn't realize it had been that long, but I guess so. I know I was one of the people that went back initially to their headquarters and, and the great thing about Ford is that whenever they do their training and they have us come out, they pay all of the expenses. And so, I mean, this is a great asset for our school district, it's a great opportunity for our people to learn and at their cost, at their expense. So this, this has just been an enormous benefit for our school district, and we have to thank Dr. Ladd for that. He, he brought this, he founded, brought it on, and has sustained it through the amount, and it's, it's just one of the things, one of the many things that he has brought to our district, so. And you asked me if I would want to volunteer later on. Absolutely, absolutely. So, thank you, great report.
And that's actually a good point, Jeanette, is that we have been the recipient of several years of many grants from Ford NGL that does pay for the work we do. And the Ford Pass training, the Ford Hub work going forward, the Ford NGL work that we'll be doing is all fee-for-service. So we see this as being a self-sustaining element of linked learning.
Well, thanks again, Dr. Ladd and your staff. Tremendous presentation, I really love this program. This what makes, what made me successful, maybe going on to college, programs like this, model programs. And also, I like your input regarding the linked learning and student outcomes. I like to have that also breaking down. That's what sells the program. You know, we have success like that, it's very visual, and you can see the outcomes of, you know, different, different communities within our school district. A question I had, now, do we participate in ROP students, and do they get money to participate in this? Or can we pay students in maybe placement, maybe at the Ford, at the, what do you call it?
At a Ford manufacturing plant somewhere?
No, not that, where they sell the cars over here on the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do we place students at the Ford dealership?
We, through our ROP auto mechanics program at Florin High School, we have had some students who have had internships not paid, but nonetheless, internships at the auto mall. I can't tell you if they were specifically at Ford or one of the other dealers, but yes, the auto mall has been one of our partners.
Right.
And does accept students for internships.
And maybe I'd like to see that in the presentation, how many students do that. That's, that's another selling effort.
That, that keeps me coming back, I hope, many times.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you. You can tell from the comments from the board members, we're all really pleased with the success of this program and really thank Dr. Ladd, too, for his leadership in this and vision. If you remember, when this came on, that was at the, if it was six years ago, that was when we were in pretty difficult straits, and so to find a silver lining and bring this into something that can support success in our district for students and opportunities was remarkable. I think a couple of board members have touched on it, but what, when I've studied this, the compelling data to me was the fact that many of the students in our academies are EL, special ed, or students that are at risk. In fact, for California Partnership, 50% are required to be at risk of their enrollment. So to have these types of outcomes with GPA and graduation rates are really remarkable because you're dealing with population that reflects the diversity of the schools and reflects the diversity of our, of our district and community. I know when I went back east to talk on them many years ago, and I talked about academies and how well they did, they just looked at me and they, "Well, of course, it's all your gate students."
Yeah.
And there was a misconception that the students that were enrolled in this were your cream of the, you know, high-end GPA students. And so it was really even more remarkable to inform them that they were a reflection of the diversity of our, of our district. So I like, I think sharing that information is, I know you have it because you have tons of information, but you've just done remarkable work with, with this, and we, we thank you and Sue Hubbard and all of the people that are helping with this. So with that, I think we'll close that, that part, and we'll look forward to hearing from you again. We have already completed items six, seven, and eight, and nine A. So we'll go to item number nine, which is a, an item that is required for our Board Bylaw on Conflict of Interest to be reviewed every, well, you'll probably tell us, Dr. Ladd, it's every two years, I believe. And what we're asked to do tonight is to indicate that there's no amendment to the Conflict of Interest Code needed and that its list of designated employees has been updated.
Madam President, members of the board, President Cox did outline exactly what is before you tonight, asking the board to look at that. The only thing that is being amended in this document is on the E 9270, paren's A, under number two, we're actually changing the title, Director Adult and Community Education to Director, CTE, Charter, and Adult Education, to accurately reflect Kathy Hamilton's actual title. The rest of this item is exactly correct, there are no changes, and we would certainly bring this to board's attention for your review and approval.
Are there any questions or comments on the Conflict of Interest? None? So I can call for a motion to indicate there's no amendment needed, and the list of employees has been updated.
I'll move it second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Conflict of Interest Code as presented. We'll do a roll call vote on this one, just to make sure every, every board member is recorded individually. Ms. Hine?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. Next on our agenda is item 9B, the Memorandum of Understanding Between Sacramento Elk Grove Pathways to Success and Elk Grove Unified School District, and the, we are asked to approve the Memorandum of Understanding.
Madam President, members of the board, I am very, very pleased this evening to bring to you an extension of a conversation that began just about a month ago, a little over a month ago, and it is unlocking another bridge for us from our Elk Grove Unified School District to our larger community, in this case, our higher education community. The Sacramento Regional Pathways to Success and Elk Grove Partnership for College to Career Memorandum of Understanding has been developed through collaboration with Sac State and with CRC. Almost a month ago, I received a call by President Gonzalez from the university inviting us to attend a meeting, myself, Ms. Penna, Liz Grasswich, Kathy Hamilton, all ventured over to meet with the president and some of his staff members. Couple of the staff members who actually are parents in our district with children in our schools, and that was also a delight, talked about the opportunity to create a dialogue that would lend itself to reaching a set of requirements or conditions that would allow students to matriculate from our school district through one of two paths, one through CRC, part of the Los Rios Community College, through Casumnas Rivers College, and then into Sac State or directly into Sac State. And if they were successful, which we have every confidence that the students would be, that they would be eligible for a guaranteed admission into the universities. Thinking about the kind of tensions and the, and the competition for, for seats in both CRC and in particular at Sac State, this is a great opportunity. We are grateful to President Gonzalez, we're grateful to President Debbie Travis for being partnering with us. And so we bring to you tonight this MOU. We've shared it with you in your agenda, look forward to you approving it. And in the event that there is the same zeal and exuberance that we have, and I believe you share this great opportunity for our children, thanks to the hard work of our teachers and our students and our parents and classified staff, this opens this great bridge. We would like to invite board members that are available to a press launch, which would be held at Florin High School. We'll get you the details this Thursday. It's on a very fast track, the MOU only, doesn't only, but this MOU gives us the ability to move forward with this at, at a very, very rapid pace. There's a lot of work that has to be done. I want to thank Liz Grasswich and Tina Penna and Kathy Hamilton and a number of other people at both the CRC and Sac State. But that's what this MOU is all about, and we're thrilled to bring it to you. And certainly, we'll answer any questions that I can at this time.
Well, another outstanding example of the connections that are made to provide unique and exciting opportunities for students. Are there any comments on this or questions of Dr. Ladd?
Fantastic.
It's fantastic, as I'm hearing the...
Yeah.
Oh, hello. Ruth Scribner, who is on the...
Trustee.
You need to speak into the microphone, please.
Greetings. As a trustee of the Los Rios Community College District, representing the Elk Grove Unified School District, among other areas, I'd like to thank you for your cooperation and your support. I think this is an incredible partnership. We're very proud of the partnerships with Elk Grove Unified School District and specifically Casumnas River College, but of course, all four of our colleges in the district. We think this is an amazing opportunity for our students and our community, and so I appreciate your consideration and your support.
Thank you for being here tonight. And Ruth Scribner, the, many, wears several hats in our district, so thank you. I will call for a motion to approve the MOU.
So moved?
I'll second.
I have a question.
And it's been moved in seconded, and there is a question.
When's the date, I mean, the time?
For Thursday.
What we'll do is, Ms. Grasswich, if you could, please, Kathy, it's this Thursday, Florin High School, I want to say about 1:00.
It'll be at 1:00 in the Law Academy classroom, and off the top of my head, I It'll be at one o'clock in the law academy classroom and off the top of my head, I can't tell you what room number that is.
We'll have student guides to be able to get us there.
Um, we won't be available. Um, okay, um, it's been moved and seconded, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, all members present have voted and, um, for the Memorandum of Understanding Between Sacramento Elk Grove Pathways to Success and Elk Grove Unified School District. Next is, uh, allocation of student fees and this is Charlotte Finacy.
I'd like to begin by saying to Dr. Ladd, thank you for your years of service and leadership to our district and to our community, and I wish you the very best in your retirement. President Cox, members of the Board, Dr. Ladd, and to Ms. Heine. Tonight, the Board is asked to discuss a request to allocate for the 2014-15 year funding for middle, high school, and alternative education schools to purchase necessary supplies, materials, and equipment in key curricular and extracurricular areas in accordance with California's Free School Guarantee. The Free School Guarantee under the California Constitution prohibits charging students any fees, charges, or deposit for curricular, extracurricular, credit, or non-credit educational activities that are part of the district or school site's educational program. Assembly Bill 1575 further requires that all supplies, materials, and equipment needed to participate in educational activities shall be provided to students free of charge. Although the law does not preclude students from asking for voluntary parent donations for materials and supplies, these donations fall short of actual need. For the 2014 school year, the Board approved $300,000 to be distributed among secondary schools to provide necessary materials, supplies, and equipment in key areas. And these areas included, among others, the visual and performing arts, science, and industrial technology. Monies were also used to provide students who were unable to pay with, to provide them with access to educational field trips. The staff is requesting that the Board discuss a proposal to approve for the 2014 year funding for required materials, supplies, and equipment for secondary schools pursuant to AB 1575. As in the 2013-14 school year, the monies allocated for the student fees for the 14-15 school year will be allocated to the schools to support basic instruction in a variety of courses. For example, in the visual and performing arts, monies will purchase art supplies such as clay, glazes, photographic supplies, and other fabrication materials, and replace necessary equipment. For band courses where students may not be required to, or not required to provide their own musical instruments to participate in band classes, the money will be used to repair broken instruments and replace those that are beyond repair. Would also be used to purchase sheet music that has been lost or damaged. The Science Department would use the money for consumable lab supplies for experiments and consumable lab manuals for students. CTE fabrication courses will utilize funding to provide fabrication materials. While certain fees are permissible, including the cost of student projects which students elect to take home, these monies are inadequate to sustain the programs. And although asking for parent donations to offset the cost of consumable materials and basic supplies as paper, pencils, and those kinds of things are allowed, the students' donation accounts fell short of the actual need. Of the $300,000 that were allocated last year, 87% was utilized by the schools and the balance of those funds went back to the general fund. Now, we realize that this request is being asked outside the budget process, but due to the critical nature that we are asking or requesting for the $3,000, $300,000 to support compliance related to student fees, this was included, this request was included in the Board's discussion and consideration in reinstating the fees, the allocation for fees, but other spending priorities were funded at the time. We're now requesting the Board's discussion and consideration in reinstating all or part of the $300,000 to purchase required materials, supplies, and equipment for our secondary schools for the 2014-15 school year.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll open this for questions or comments. Mr. Fortina?
Uh, thank you. I have a number of questions and I certainly have a number of comments. Uh, first of all, this feels like two bites of the apple for me. And, and, uh, as a member of the Board representing thousands of constituents that were concerned with the way in which we budgeted our funding, it, uh, it, it presents a number of problems. This item did come before the Board, is one of the myriad of items that were requested for funding. Um, a great deal of those items came from the public, from our, our community meetings we held back in September. And people advocated certainly for different items. This was one of the items advocated for, but in the context of the, of the funds available, the Board did not fund this item. And now we come back to say, "Oh, but we need it, so, you know, come up with another $300,000." Uh, we're in negotiations right now. Uh, when we concluded our budget process, I voted no on the budget and one of the reasons was that it was obvious that with the spending priorities that had been established, that we left little in the way of money available for compensation. If this is an item that is required by law, then we had no choice and it should just automatically have been a part of the budget process. My first question is, what if we don't fund it? That's the first question. What if we don't fund it? Where does, where would you get the money? If indeed we have to provide and we can't charge, where would the money come from? Secondly, do we have alternatives to further reducing the monies available from, uh, unrestricted general fund or from reserves? I believe there are ways we can do that. But I guess my major question would be, um, how would we provide the supplies and materials required with the existing budgets if we do not allocate an additional $300,000?
Yeah, the simple answer is we're going to have to provide and it will be, we won't do something else in order to do this. I would, uh, offer to the Board relative to the questions, because certainly understand how difficult these, these, uh, decisions are. There are a number of things that have faced us through the entire budget process and not, not unique just to LCAP. My recommendation, should the Board adopt some portion of this, either, either the full amount or some lesser amount, that the direction be given to me and staff to go back and identify dollars that may be available, that don't go to general fund necessarily, that allow us to look to find, are there other dollars we can harvest that don't impinge upon those expenditures that have not at this point been allocated? And that would be my recommendation to allow us to do that and bring back a recommendation that would act in that fashion.
Does that answer your question then?
It, it partially answers my question. I think, I think that, um, for me, through two budget cycles, one thing that has been, been evident is that we end, have ended up with large ending balances two years in a row. So, um, in the absence of full budget deliberations, which we have not had for the two years I've been on the Board, I guess I'm comfortable with the notion that, um, given the fact that we, we end up with ending balances, that we must have areas where we are, uh, over budgeted or misbudgeted, therefore there's probably $300,000 sitting around somewhere. And, uh, that certainly could be provided to, uh, meet the needs of student fees.
Yeah, I have no real problem with it and I trust that we will be able to fund the $300,000. We're talking about a lot of other things as a Board that is less important in, than this, in my opinion. So I do support that, the $300,000.
Thank you.
I like, uh, Dr. Ladd's suggestion and I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I too, um, support Mr. Dr. Ladd's suggestions. One of my concerns is, you know, it says here, "Although the law does not preclude schools from asking for voluntary parent donations for materials and supplies and so on," my concerns, uh, really center on what about the schools that are low socioeconomic and you don't have that parent engagement? I don't want to penalize the kids that need it the most by not funding this. So, is there a way to identify the need, the schools, um, and come up with something a little bit more specific than saying that we need to fund, um, you know, it doesn't say who, what, where, really anything, in my opinion. So I would want a little bit more information, but, and, but I do support funding this because at the same time, I, I do not agree that we can turn to parents for everything, particularly in those impoverished neighborhoods. That money does not exist. I have gone to schools where there's a handful of balls for a number of children to play with. Um, so again, I don't, we shouldn't be punishing children and the poor, um, for this decision. So I, I would be in support, um, if there are alternatives, I would certainly be open to them, but I am in support of funding a need particularly as it relates to our low socioeconomic schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no problem supporting this, um, for many of the reasons that have been mentioned already. I know I am always writing checks, you know, for my little guy, little guy, and, uh, for different activities and things and more than what is needed, but it's, not a lot of parents can do that. There's a lot of parents that cannot. And so I don't mind, you know, doing my part. And I think as a district, if we're going to offer things, we need to, you know, uh, support them with, with the supplies and things that they need. And in addition to that, I just want to say that the Board communication that we got, this is the most thorough list of the fees that, that are in the district than I think I've ever seen in this district and been around a long time. Um, and as I was going through, I, something would pop into my head and if I just kept reading them, my answer was answered, my question was answered. So thank you for, for giving us this and it's something that I will keep. But back into the issue, yes, I do support the funding.
Yes, I support this program or this funding source, $300,000 for the supplies, materials, and equipment. But I'm also wondering, do we need more money or equivalent money like this at the junior high level? I just recently, uh, been talking to junior high kids, what?
This is for all of them?
For all, this.
For all.
Okay, so seventh, eighth, and, and, okay, excellent, because would this pay also for transportation, for some of these kids to come, go to school?
All this list and all here?
Not to school.
To school, that's what.
No, this is not an augmentation to home-to-school transportation costs.
Well, I have an issue in Area One, which a kid from Florin High School walks all the way to Rutter along the Florin High School Quarter, which is a very dangerous area. And, and when my kids went to school, they were bused at the Norman Waters, uh, Park to Rutter. And right now, we have a lot of students walking all the way from the other side of Florin High School to Rutter and it's, uh, it's dangerous. They have to walk in the gutter, you know? And some of these elementary kids are going to, uh, Anna Kirschgater, walking in the gutter, in, in the ditch, on the way, on the way to Power Inn Road. So we need to, uh, think about the, this issue also, safe way to school and also, uh, more materials and school supplies. This would help our teachers and it'd help our, our, our students, the whole works. I support this 100%.
Mr. Perez, just for information, uh, we certainly appreciate those concerns. I know Mr. Pierce and Ms. Dixon, our Walk to School Coordinator, uh, are looking at those concerns and so we appreciate that. The one other, one other comment that I would bring before us, and I know this Board will continue to be big advocates for public education, um, the fees question came about, I want to say, it's always been there, but about two years ago, there was a lawsuit levied. And one of the things that I would take away from this, notwithstanding the, the direction by the Board to find dollars not, not already previously allocated, and we'll do that, we'll bring that back into Ms. Allen's question about what's the allocation to the varying schools and so forth, um, i- is that, that the legislature must understand that even with the current proposal that's on the table, that we're hoping will come to fruition with the Governor's Plan, funds us in 2020, 21, at 2007, 8 levels, and we're continuing to add layers upon layers back on school district budgets with little recognition in funding to help augment that. I mean, the fees thing, the last two years, these are numbers we're working on, we're working to do everything we can. And the Board hasn't forgotten that you just had a nice, uh, opportunity to help support the post, uh, employment, uh, benefits to the tune at full implementation in seven years of about $36 million a year, every year for the next 20 years after you reach that point. I would hope that during the legislative cycle, we continue to impress upon the legislators the need to think outside the box and help create funding mechanisms that more adequately fund public education for all the right reasons.
Yeah, um, Dr. Ladd, you just said that, that we could look at, at options from non-allocated.
Correct.
But we can also look at options from allocated.
Absolutely.
And certainly, uh, those monies that have already been allocated for various functions can become a source by which we can garner $300,000 and not further erode the dollars available, uh, in our budgets for compensation.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay, um, yeah, just to summarize the Board members' comments is that, um, I feel like this is, um, they, we understand that this is, is a law and that it is something that, um, we've seen many times on our many budget deliberations we've had over the past six or seven months. And with all the, the demands and supplies, the demands outweighing the, the supplies that we have by far, that it's one that we did not, uh, address that needs to be addressed. Um, and, um, it just sounds like the question is not to address it, but where the funds come from. So I'm not quite sure, I know that the, um, that we're being asked to, um, move on this. Do we need to move on it tonight or did you want to, um, get more information on where we can, um, allocate funds for it?
It would be helpful if, if the Board, what I took away from the conversation is the Board understands the requirement of this, um, that we would then set about figuring out the best way to address this $300,000 expenditure. There was a request for some other information, we'll bring it back and we can do that. Um, and whether it be ending fund balance, combination of ending fund balance, other monies we harvest back that have been allocated, not fully expended, that are still inside the budget, I have confidence that our finance staff will be able to bring back a solution to that, which we can report out to you, um, for, from the school's perspective. They're in the middle of making sure they have what kids need and so it's preferable that if the Board is of that mind, we give that go-ahead, um, staff can then be able to help start allocating and making sure that teachers have what they need. need, the classes have what they need, and we'll figure out how we bring that back to the board.
Okay, then I'm going to call for a motion to approve the request for student fees.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve student fees. And I will take a roll call vote on this one, since there has been some many comments on it.
Yes for them.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Finacy.
Thank you.
And Dr. Ladd will get back to us on the funding mechanisms.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll work with Mr. Fagan and staff and others to do that.
Okay. All right, the next item is our 9D, and it's the Interim Superintendent Addendum Agreement. And we do have copies of this, I believe, that are out. The board, and Ms. Heine, I just wanted it to go on record, I don't know if I said that it was a unanimous vote from the board from closed session, but to make sure that we have that on record for the interim superintendent, Mark Sarudi. And in open session, we are to approve an agreement with him, which is an addendum to his existing contract, which begins as interim superintendent on September 13 and terminates the day before the contractual start date of the district's new superintendent. And at that expiration of this addendum, Mr. Sarudi would continue to be employed by the district as Associate Superintendent Education Services pursuant to his terms in his existing employment agreement dated July 1, 2014. And the board has been given copies of this agreement with compensation duties, board superintendent relations, termination, return rights, workdays, and use of office indemnity, and all the other legal provisions. So I don't know if they have any questions or comments on it. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the interim superintendent addendum agreement. We'll do a roll call vote.
Enthusiastically.
Aye.
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 Really, really enthusiastically, yes.
You got a chance to back out. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, Mr. Sarudi, yes, you are official. So Mr. Herberger, who's been asking. Okay, with that, we're delighted and we'll know that there will be a transition period in the next couple of weeks and then we will be moving forward. Okay, action items, we have some that are brought back this time that we have discussed in the past. And this is starting with Mr. Pierce on the SMUD Proposition 39 memorandum.
Thank you again, President Cox, members of the board, Dr. Ladd and Ms. Heine. Again, a follow-up to our August 19 conversation. It's a MOU that we're very excited about that we were able to negotiate with SMUD. It's very unique and specific to our district. SMUD, basically at the end of the day, Proposition 39 passed by the taxpayers and the voters, is going to give our district approximately $3 million a year for five years to do energy retrofit projects district-wide. Part of that program entails a planning allotment, where they want the district to go out and do a major assessment of all facilities and start putting together a five-year expenditure plan. The program provides an additional $850,000 roughly to us for that service. Through our work with SMUD, they are going to provide about two-thirds of that service to us at the tune of $650,000 is what this MOU that's being brought before you tonight will provide for our district. So SMUD is asking us to obviously then divert those funds back into construction projects to improve our learning environment and obviously to save energy, which also saves the general fund. So I couldn't be more pleased with this. Again, I will brag and say it's unique to our district and no other district in SMUD's territory has this. We've all been thanking Dr. Ladd, so I'll do that again tonight. When I started here, SMUD came to us and said some not-too-complimentary things about our energy consumption. And I'm a competitive guy, Dr. Ladd's a competitive guy. And he said, "We're not going to let them say that anymore, Rob. I want you to get in a closed room with those folks and fix this." And so through Dr. Ladd's vision, small things add up to big numbers, our energy conservation program. And I can promise you, SMUD knows because of their relationship with Dr. Ladd, when we say we're going to do something, we do it. And the reason they trust us with this MOU that's before you tonight, I believe, to be because of that reputation that we've earned with them. And so couldn't be more pleased. I would look for any questions you might have and look for you to approve the MOU.
Well, thank you and thank you for all your work on this. It's just remarkable. And particularly, I think something that was mentioned last time was the opportunity for students in this process to really does create a learning experience for them. So with that, I think we had, we commented on this last time, but if anyone else has additional comments or questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I'll move it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding with SMUD. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion is carried. Unanimous vote. Next, we have pupil textbooks and instructional materials. And this is Jerelyn Ewing. And I think you're a return visit here, too.
So good evening, President Cox, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Ladd, and Ms. Heine. Last time I get to say that up here. As you will recall, the Board of Education held a public hearing in accordance with Education Code 60119 regarding textbooks and instructional materials at the last board meeting on August 19. Tonight, I am here to request the approval of Resolution Number 10 certifying that instructional materials monies are expended in accordance with the Pupil Textbook and Instructional Materials Incentive Program Act, which ensures that each pupil has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials.
Okay, this is a second time with this. And are there any additional questions or comments from before? Then I will call for a motion to approve the Resolution Number 10.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 10, 2014, '15, pupil textbooks and instructional materials. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you.
Next, we have another item that was before our last board meeting, Elk Grove Unified's School District's Annual Service Plan for Special Education. Mr. Tolster, you're already up here. Great.
President Cox, members of the board, Dr. Ladd, Ms. Heine. On August 19, we held a public hearing regarding the adoption of the Annual Service Delivery and Budget Plan for Special Education. Tonight, we come back asking that the board approve that service delivery and budget plan to be submitted to the state of California.
Okay, again, this item was discussed at our previous meeting. Are there any additional questions or comments? Then I will call for a motion to approve the plan.
I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Elk Grove Unified School District's Annual Service Plan for Special Education. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Tolster. Next, we have the Constitution Day Resolution, and Mr. Sarudi will do this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Cox, members, President Cox, members of the board, Dr. Ladd and Ms. Heine. The Board of Education is requested to adopt a resolution that designates September 17, 2014 as Constitution Day. September 17, 2014 will be the 227th anniversary of the writing of the Constitution. And in 2004, Congress created a federal holiday, Constitution Day, that designated September 17 as Constitution Day in May 2005. And through this resolution, the Board of Education would communicate a clear message about the importance of our country's foundational governing document and the importance of civic values.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution that designates September 17, 2014 as Constitution Day. Are there any questions or comments? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion is carried unanimously. And you are also doing the presentation on Hispanic Heritage Month Resolution?
Yes, ma'am. The Board of Education is requested to adopt a resolution that designates September 15 through October 15, 2014, 2014 as Hispanic Heritage Month. In September 1968, Congress authorized President Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week. The observance was expanded in 1988 to a month-long celebration, September 15 through October 15. And throughout the year, the contributions of Americans with Hispanic heritage are presented in the regular curriculum. However, the special focus for one month serves as a reminder of the combined contributions of this group.
Second.
Yeah, I have questions. Do we have a curriculum of study for this?
A specific curriculum of study?
That we give out to our high schools, junior highs, elementary schools?
The curriculum, as it indicates, the curriculum, and Ms. Trinell may be able to speak more specifically to it, but the curriculum specific to it is embedded throughout the curriculum. And so specific through, can I cite it exactly in terms of which grade levels? I can't at this point in time, but we could certainly provide that specific information for you with respect to the curriculum maps and the curriculum that we adhere to. But yes, it's embedded within, and that's what's noted here, is all of this is embedded within the regular curriculum over the course of the school year, not just a designated day or a designated month.
Do they update it, then?
The curriculum is always updated.
Okay, then I will call for a motion on this.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15 through October 15, resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Next, we have board and superintendent reports. Dr. Ladd, I'll start with you.
Carrying on every single day until it's the last day. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board.
No reports based on my committee responsibilities.
No real reports today.
Okay, I do have the report on the superintendent search updates. And we are moving forward as anticipated at very quick speed. But I would like to take an opportunity on behalf of the board to thank all the members of the community and the schools and the parents and the students and the employees who participated in the meetings and surveys on what they think are important characteristics for a superintendent. And this information is used in three ways: inform the search firm on potential candidates, to inform the board as they consider final candidates, and to give candidates, to candidates, so they understand the expectations of everyone in our district. I would also like to thank the members of the Stakeholder Committee. This is a new process for us. We're grateful to have the support of 12 employee groups and district organization representatives to assist in the interview process of candidates. And I'd like to note, after our approval at the last board meeting, there were two leaders who had conflicts in their schedules and designated other leaders to take their place. The new representative from EGA is Scott Sidmore. And the new representative from the Board Finance Committee is Mark Mendenhall. And the committee has already met for an orientation with Dr. Kruger. Thank you, Dr. Kruger. And we are pleased to announce that all 12 dedicated individuals were present for that meeting. And so we will be working very hard this week on selection of a superintendent. We have five meetings scheduled in the next seven days. So we will be very busy with that. But that's my report from the superintendent search process. And with that, Mr. Lee.
Nothing other than what I have heard been reported. I do want to talk a little bit about the Elk Grove Multicultural Fair, which Elk Grove Unified was out there representing our diverse district. And I had the pleasure of running into trustee Bobby Singh Allen as well. And I was just impressed with the diversity of Elk Grove. And it's just a nice reminder that we are strong because we are different.
No committee reports, although I would like to announce on September 18, there is an open house at the Elk Grove Food Bank, and I will be speaking.
We had a two-by-two scheduled for, with Folsom Cordova and, Ransor Cordova, excuse me. Boy, lay off. But there was a couple of us couldn't make it. And so I suggested that we postpone any future meetings until the first of the year until we had our two members of the committee in place. And so we did that. Other than that, I've just been going to lots of meetings and back to school nights.
I also attend the multicultural fair. I really liked our booths that were there. The staff and the students gave very excellent presentations to myself and also to the people who attended the conference, or the fede, I call it, the fair. Also, I attended CSUS, Spanish-speaking college information day, which was with Dr. Ladd and staff. It was a very successful day. We met the Chancellor Gonzalez and other representatives of the community, Channel 19, the Chancellor's Office, and Assemblyman Dickerson, who was co-sponsored. I'd like to suggest we maybe next time have, provide buses possibly on a Saturday for our students to attend. I'd also like to give kudos to Mike Jones. I found this in Sacramento Bee, who is an Elk Grove teacher. His accomplishment, selected to receive the Angels in Adoption Award. Jones will be recognized for his work in the Elk Grove Unified School District with his own organization Courageous Connections, which addresses the needs of children in foster care. He has been instrumental in creating advisory classes for foster youth in the school district. The Angels Award recognizes extraordinary contributions on behalf of children in need of families. So kudos to Mike Jones. I'd also like to notify us and staff, Sacramento City College is also having Beyond the Dream Conference this September 27 at 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Sacramento Junior College Student Center, 3835 Fremont Boulevard. Okay, it's an outreach conference for students, parents and educators at Sacramento City College. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I just was reminded that Ms. Singh Allen and Mr. Madison and I and Dr. Ladd were at the NASA liftoff. And I'd like Dr. Ladd to describe that because he did a really good job of summarizing how exciting that was.
Madam President, members of the board, the Elliott Ranch family had just an exciting event. We were one of only two schools in the nation that got invited by NASA to be able to have a student-led discussion, questions, to the two astronauts on the International Space Station. So we get there, and there was a parent who had spearheaded this and had done a magnificent job working with Brian and the staff. And we get there and the kids were sitting on the floor and waiting, and the students that were going to ask questions were lined up. And there is Todd Barber and Steve Mate and some of our colleagues. And my mind ran to this notion that said that it was probably going to be the Ferraris on the parabola on the left side of the download with, you know, to make this thing, we're going to talk to the astronauts and we're going to see them, and they're going to talk to us, we're going to be able to see them talk to us. I lose cell calls on I-5, you know? I can't, you know, they're dead, you know, coming down 5 right there by that water plant. I lose connection. And I'm thinking, and bang, it starts. You could almost, you could hear a pin drop. Our students, all of the students asked great questions. The student audience were absolutely just perfectly attentive. The astronauts wouldn't, couldn't make us any prouder of their being there. One of the astronauts was the shuttle commander. There were five astronauts. And it was just remarkable. And at the end of the day, just talking to the students, all the students and staff and the kids that asked questions, it was absolutely remarkable. And I walked up to Todd Barber and to Steve and I said, what was the technology that made that happen? It was flawless, flawless. He goes, "It was Skype." We were talking to astronauts on the space station via Skype and didn't miss a beat. At the end, Brian McNeil did ask the astronauts, and I'm still perplexed by it, how, when did they discover that there's actual plant life growing on the outside? did they discover that there's actual plant life growing on the outside of the International Space Station with no atmosphere? And in all the kids and all of us, you can see the kids turn their heads and go, how's that happening? But it was a remarkable experience. I want to congratulate the Elliott Ranch community. The students couldn't have made us any prouder. It was a really wonderful, wonderful day. And for me, it was also reported in the paper. It really is full circle. I remember distinctly getting brought into the multipurpose room as a elementary kid, put on the floor to watch on a black-and-white set the first space shot. And now, we've come full circle, but here are our children, talking to them and seeing them on the International Space Station. It was a remarkable experience. But kudos to the community and the families and the staff for well done.
Thank you. And I think the message was, there's no such thing as impossible. So, and now, we'll go to the consent agenda and Mr. Fortina.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda as follows. Item 15, approval of minutes. Item 16, personnel actions. Item 17, variable term waiver. Item 18, approval of purchase order history. Item 19, investment report, 2014, second quarter. Item number 20, ratification of contracts. Item number 21, ratification of non-public school, non-public agency contracts. 22, acceptance of gifts. Number 23, disposal of obsolete surplus property. The removal of item 24. Item 25, out-of-state field trip approval. Item 26, classroom modification at Sierra Enterprise Elementary School. Item 27, classroom modification at Sierra Enterprise Elementary School, acceptance and notice of completion. Item 28, Franklin Elementary School portables, 2014, relocatable building installation, change order 1. 29, New Dillard Elementary School, increments 2A and B. Item 29A, approval to purchase copier-toners required cooperatively through the National Joint Powers Alliance. Item 29B, approval to purchase Chromebooks is required cooperatively through the National Joint Powers Alliance and to contract for Chromebook logistics services cooperatively through California multiple award schedule. 29C, award of requests for proposal and approval memorandum of understanding for after-school providers. And 29D, installation of Wi-Fi for 11 elementary schools, authorization of two lease-back contracts.
Very good. It's a long list. With the exception of number 24, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull, excuse me, I'd like to pull item number 29C.
29C, and what is that one?
29C.
Oh, after-school providers, okay. Okay, with the exception of 24 and 29C, we will call for a motion on the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda minus item 24 and 29C. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, Mr. Fortina is the one that asked to look at item 24, and so, entertain your questions.
I get Kathy. Yeah, I have several questions with respect to agenda item 24. None of my questions have to deal with the benefit that the grants provide to the students in program, or for that matter, the efficacy of the program. When we were deliberating on how we would allocate our funds for the 2014-2015 school year, one of the items that we discussed was the district's funding and implementation of a grant program for innovative programs and for student advancement. And the decision was that we couldn't afford it right now, so we'll put it on hold. We'll come back to it at another point in time. So, to my surprise, as I'm constantly learning, up pops an agenda item to approve a grant-funded program. So, question number one is, how long's the grant program been around?
I can't tell you exactly how long, except that this is recurring funding. It comes through every year. I don't know, Ms. Cox, if you remember from your years as an FFA parent, it's supplemental funding, categorical funding for specifically agricultural programs. We get it every year, and part of the process, the funding process, is that it is brought before our board. As soon as we're notified by the state that the funding's going to come, we have to put it on a board agenda for your approval. It's an annual supplemental grant.
Comes in every year.
Do we have other incentive grant programs?
Not in my world.
Okay. So, there may be some in somebody else's world?
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
I will say that this is one of the last remaining categorical grants. There was a lot of debate through the spring and before the state budget was approved about rolling this into local-controlled funding, and it was a last-minute item that it was pulled out and maintained as a categorical.
All right, and my last question, how the allocation is decided?
It's based on a formula, and I might have to follow up with a B.C. to tell you the exact criteria in the formula, but it has to do with student enrollments, the size of the faculty. And so, each, it's something that goes with an FFA program.
Mm-hmm.
And I can get back to you with more specific information about the criteria.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
With that information, can we go ahead and move on item 24?
Then I would like to move approval of item 24.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 24, the incentive grant funding application for the program year 2014-15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. And then, item 29C, I don't know who is the person on this one, but this is an item on the after-school providers that I assume are already started. I don't know.
They have. And so, a bit of background on this, there, and if I get anything wrong, Ms. Cherry can probably correct me because she's familiar with the schools equally to that as I. There's some schools that are running programs. Ms. Deutsch and Ms. Eastman, when they were speaking earlier, referenced that we have programs that are using Elk Grove staff, and that's true. Those are schools that have multiple funding sources. So, they have ACES, they'll have 21st Century, and they have also some adult literacy monies that they combine so that they can run that type of a program. These schools are the ACES grants, I think back about 2010, they were reduced by as much as, they were almost cut in half. They were significantly reduced. And so, those dollar amounts, the dollar amount that you see there, the information, the 96, roughly 96,000, it's actually closer to about 110,000. The actual grant awards were 112,500 per school. The reason you see this is exactly what you said, President Cox, which is those programs have been running, and these programs have used an outside provider. The reason we use an outside provider is, for example, they necessitate a program coordinator, an academic program coordinator. Academic program coordinator in our district would literally use that entire fund. And so, we use that because we use an outside provider that can provide those services. We have schools, and I just use an example, Irene B. West, one of our large schools, the, when the state, when that money flows through, it's dictated to us the number of students that we're to provide. Their number is 88, and I may be off by two or three students. So, it's approximately 88 students that they need to support, and there's 20 to 1 is the ratio of student to staff. So, there's guidelines that we need to adhere to, and that funding amount necessitates for us to go to the outside, and thus, we do. And we were using Think Together in the past, and Think Together pulled out of the Sacramento region completely for their own business purposes. And we worked with them to make sure that there was no disruption to the programming for those students at those schools, and we've been transitioning. Part of the reason this needs to move forward is they're moving out on September 15th. And so, we're required to continue these programs, and so, we can't actually have a delay in programming, and thus, the reason for us bringing it forward to you both in terms of why we work with an outside provider and the timeline for it.
Hey, thanks for that. I just, what was your concern on this one, or why did you ask for us to?
Well, I went to the Department of Education and learned a little bit more about the after-school provider program, and I learned a lot regarding the services and the goals and objectives. And what type of students they are targeted. And I looked at the provider, I went to Target Excellence, the website, and I didn't see a staff that is reflective of our community. I didn't see a staff that looked like they were culturally or linguistically competent to provide services to our students, for these type of students that they're geared to work with. I'm very concerned about the process and how they selected the Target Excellence. Why didn't we go and ask other community nonprofits who provide this same type of services? Well, I called two or three providers that do after-school services, and I talked to their administratives, and they said they were never contacted. And so, that really concerns me because, you know, we say we collaborate with community nonprofits, but yet, in this situation, we're two CBOs who have worked with community, with school districts and after-school programs, and they were not contacted. So, I'm very concerned about the process and how Target Excellence was selected. I don't think it was an open process, and I don't support that. We had this issue prior to other contractors, and it's, and we're having it again today. You mentioned that this other provider is no longer providing the service, and now, that was the reason why we had to go out and select another one like this within a day, or what?
No, we went through a formal process. The process that we use is actually, there's state guidelines that we adhere to and that we follow. And so, we can certainly provide you the detailed information, including the rubric we used, the communications that we provided. Folks and Learning Support Services have been doing this for years. And we certainly understand the interest of the board, which is to be aware of and elicit responses from highly qualified and potential service providers, and that is what we did. And this wasn't a process whereby we did this in a day or two. This has been going on for a month or more in terms of when we were provided the information, and we worked directly with Think Together to enable them and work with them to retain their services, to afford us the time needed to make sure that we were making the proper selection.
And what was the reason why we couldn't hire internally within our staff, teachers, I'm talking paralegals, et cetera, et cetera?
It becomes cost prohibitive.
I mean, what do you mean by that?
There's, for example, the current, the total dollar amount of approximately $106,000, one of the positions that these programs necessitate at each school is an academic program coordinator. That's a certificated staff member, and literally, that entire amount would be taken up by that position alone. The schools that are using our internal staff, Elk Grove staff, are those that have additional funding sources that are able to use those additional monies.
Could a Title I coordinator also do this?
A Title I coordinator?
Yes. We have leads, Title I leads at different schools doing...
We don't necessarily have a Title I lead.
We don't have that position here. Can I have some reply to the unions?
Our history with ACES has been long-going. It's been since our first president, probably 12, 13, 14 years ago. And we've signed memorandum of understanding with ACES. If you look actually on the district's own website about ACES and what they talk about and describe for who performs these services, you will see paraeducator instructional aid listed there. And part of that is to go and have the continuum of services for the students at that particular site. The staff knows those students. They carry on that behavioral modification for those students. And so, that's why CSEA was always approached as being a service-oriented. So, we have signed these MOUs usually in October with the understanding that this is only providing financial piece. So, they're only going to be receiving their salary. They don't have any statutory rights. They don't receive anything beyond just salary. So, it's basically giving them a little extra for their income. But the staffing has always been CSEA, until last year when we discovered over, and I did mention this to the board, over at Union House where we saw a lot of our people being serviced from the outside. And so, we asked again, what happened to CSEA having the first rights and then supplementing with anybody from the outside as needed? And so, that was being looked at. And we have addressed this with human resources and had that opportunity with the director, and she was going to go and find out because we heard it was happening again this year. And we did this in August, at our August relations meeting. And so, when we saw this coming up, we thought, okay, give us a little more time, the director a little more time to go and research, what happened to all those people from CSEA that was supposed to help with that continuing care and receiving only, you know, base salary, but not the statutory benefits? What happened to those people? Because I personally went out and looked at some of these programs Friday evening and visited some of the same schools and saw some impacted areas, but I didn't recognize CSEA people, so I have a worry about that. And it's true, you would impact the program if you hired from outside and get those coordinators. But again, I've met the coordinators that are Elk Grove Unified School District coordinators. I've met some of the teachers, but I just didn't see the CSEA people. So, that's a concern that we just want to look into.
Okay, I think one of the issues here is that this, if, and maybe I'm wrong, but if this is not adopted, then the services cannot be continued for the students. So, that is a concern for me. I would not, talking about a continuum, I would not want to see those services interrupted for after-school programs, especially at the schools that we're talking about and the students that they serve. And it looks like you did send out requests for proposals to nine providers, and I know you have, as you said, certain requirements that you have to look out to get funded by ACES. So, it's not that you just went to one provider and that was what you took. So, it looks like there was a competitive bid, and it looks like you came up with a provider that would provide what we need for our district. And I'm sure you'll, there'll be ongoing conversations with CSEA. I don't know why not. So, that's something that I don't think necessarily needs to influence the outcome of providing this for students. But, okay, Mr. Madison called for the vote.
I have one more. I like, I have one more statement. It's an issue regarding quality service. If we don't have bilingual, bicultural, linguistic competent individuals, how are you going to teach these individuals? How are you going to approach them?
Okay, I think that that will be monitored, and it'll be brought, we usually have a report brought back to us on the, our after-school programs and what their evaluation is. So, those types of comments will come forward then, and you've heard the concerns. It's been called, Mr. Madison called for a vote on this, and Ms. Amavisca moved it, and Ms. Singh Allen seconded. So, I will take a roll call vote on this since there has been some discussion. Fortina?
Aye.
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 Singh Allen?
Aye. Amavisca?
Yes.
No.
The motion is carried 6 to 1. Thank you very much. And with that, we have our last goodbye to Dr. Ladd tonight. Sorry, I said it's progressive recognition here because you won't let us do it all at once. So, we just have some fun little things to wish you well in our last regular board meeting. I know all of us will be seeing you at some point in the next two weeks, I guess it is, but we just appreciate you so much. And we did want to honor you with the gift certificate for the Culinary Institute, but...
Do you have any comments?
I think we're going to stand up for this. I've been sitting a long time. Ms. Singh Allen got you something that she, on behalf of the board, that I think that you need to show.
Thank you. Show right now?
Yeah, show it right now. Yeah, show it right now.
Beautiful. I love it. For those of you that don't know, we stand in graduation with thousands of kids coming by. And every child comes by, every one of us in line says something, and that's my slogan. Thank you very much.
Golds. Forgot the golds.
Thank you. And can we get a group picture? Can we get a group?
Definition of a newborn.
Oh, that's nice.
Hey, that's great. Can we get a group picture? Can we get a group picture with him?
I think we definitely should get a group picture. And with that, unless there's other items. Oh, we have other items. Okay, sorry.
And I'm glad I don't have to remind you of your words about an hour ago.
I have three items and I'll go through them quickly. First of all, it's my pleasure to announce the appointment of Mr. Michael Alvarez to serve on the Finance Committee for Trustee Area 7. Mr. Alvarez has had 30 years of experience with the Department of Industrial Relations and Transportation and he's the current chair of the Safety Center located off on Bradshaw Avenue. He also has or had children at Sheldon, Florin, Valley, Adriani, and Albionni. He has a daughter-in-law teaching biology at Monterey Trail and a son-in-law who teaches P in sports psychology at Monterey Trail. He has a son-in-law teaching biology at Elk Grove High School and he has a son in the Peace Corps. Since I was in the office today, I notified Mr. Fagan, who, our staff representative to Finance Committee, and I will also provide the information to you, Ms. Cox. Secondly, pursuant to Article 3F of the Finance Committee bylaws and in support of the work Mr. Fagan and I are going to be doing, I am requesting that the Finance Committee review and give input on budget policies 3,000 A, B, and C and 3,100 A, B, and C. That adjunct responsibility of the Finance Committee will provide support to us as we develop recommendations. Also, since I have an appointment scheduled, I'd like to remind the board that Mr. Fagan and I, per Dr. Ladd's request, will review and make suggested revisions to Board Policy 3312 A, B, and C contracts and 36B consultants. Okay, thank you.
I have an item. I was looking at the California School Board Association webpage the other day and I noticed that a few of you are sitting on the boards. And I was wondering, is there a transition, if you're not going to run, that we should point somebody now? No, what's?
There's a time period, the timeframe that you.
What is the time period?
After the election.
After elections? Okay. Two, can we have a report when we're going to go paperless? Anything like that?
General line?
General online?
We're working on that.
No due dates, any particular dates?
Staff's continuing to get all the information, bring back from our last meeting.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I will announce the last regular meeting of Dr. Ladd's board adjourned. And we're going to take a picture, so.
Should I put on my T-shirt?
Wait, wait, before you put it on, Dr. Ladd.
Yes.
I need to get a picture with these resolutions. I needed help from the board.
Continue success.
And then you can put.